... Oviedo City Council meeting, it is July 17th at 6:30 PM. Everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief White, if you would do us the honors as you always do.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Chief.
I would suggest to you, if you were contemplating chest pain or any type of medical emergency, tonight's the night to heaven.[51.76][51.76](laughter)
You look to be pretty well manned.
We're well taken care of this evening. If you'd like to join me in a prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, tonight we're going to bestow special recognition and promotion on two of our fine public safety officers, one in police, one in fire. Lord, we just pray that you envelop them and keep them safe and give them wisdom in the decisions that they make as they govern over the lives of so many of our fire and police officers, and their decisions are vital to their success. Lord, we also are reminded of the military tragedy that occurred that took 16 lives. Lord, we pray for those families and those fellow veterans that served alongside them, and Lord, just comfort them and give them great healing. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:32 PM. We have all members of Council present. First order of business, we have some ceremonial items, and the first one is a citizen recognition. Chief, I believe this one is yours, correct? Chief White?
Council, you're well aware of the wildfire and drought season that we encountered this year. We hadn't seen anything like that since 1998. It was a very active season. Of course, we actively participated along with our first response partners for a 165-acre fire. We refer to it as the Live Oak Fire, and it was a very eventful month, and that wasn't the only activity we had. We had several other small wildfires, one of which, some of our local citizens, some Jackson Heights Middle School students, were engaged before our fire department arrived and began operations. So we thought it'd be appropriate tonight to recognize them, bring them before City Council. We're going to recognize tonight Joshua Melendez, Brian Lopez, and our third person, Mr. Thomas could not be here, he's on vacation. So I would like to ask him to come forward, and Council, if you'd come down and assist. Go and turn around. Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to you to read the certificates, if you don't mind.
My pleasure.
To share with you the activities they were engaged in, we had a small wildfire that was growing quite rapidly near the Chapman Road area, and these gentlemen quickly got engaged in some brief firefighting activities, and more importantly called 911 very effectively to us. You probably saw them, they got their 15 minutes of fame on the local news station, and as Jackson Heights alumni myself, I'm very proud y'all are standing here tonight.
Both Jackson Heights? Wow, look at that. Well, gentlemen, great job. We appreciate your quick thinking, because evidently, as Fire Chief just said, you helped save something that could have been a very major disaster in our city. But I'll start with Brian. I have this from the Oviedo Fire Rescue. This is Citizen Meritorious Service Award, and it's hereby presented on July 17th, 2017, to Brian Lopez for your excellence in service on April 29th, 2017, for assisting in reporting and containment of a brush fire endangering homes in the Oviedo community. It's signed by Chief White. Brian? Here you are, this is yours. Congratulations. Give him a big round.[303.27][303.27](applause) You can wear that patch proud. And Joshua, we have the same for you. It reads, again, "Oviedo Fire Rescue Citizens Meritorious Service Award is hereby presented on July 17th, 2017, to Joshua Melendez for your excellence in service on April 29th, 2017, for assisting in reporting and containment of a brush fire endangering homes in the Oviedo community." Once again, it's signed by our Fire Chief White. Congratulations.[339.36][339.36](applause) Gentlemen, why don't you come on and stand right up front here, and Council, Chief, get up in the middle with them. Let's get around for a photo.
Couple of years you can download our application. Come on.[355.28][355.28](laughter)
Actually, they should be in the Explorers. That's what I was thinking. Got it, Drew? Guys, congratulations. Great job.[373.28][373.28](applause) Council, why don't we stay here, and Chief, why don't we skip over? The police was the next one, but since you're here, let's do firefighters, and then we'll go off to Chief Chudnow.
Thank you, Mayor. We're honored tonight to recognize a recent promotion in the Fire Rescue Department. Raul, would you please come forward? As he's coming up, I'll tell you a few things about him. He was the next candidate on the eligibility list after a very competitive promotional process, joined our agency in 2004. Also has his state paramedic certification, state fire officer certification, and if that's not enough, an associate degree in fire science. Well, he's had an outstanding career. We're proud tonight to promote him to the rank of Lieutenant.
Who's going to pin him?
His wife.[435.84][435.84](applause)
Raul, is your family here with you?
Yes.
Can they all come on up here and join us?
Yes.
Come on up, guys. Absolutely. Come on, kids. Anybody else? Who else do we have? We have little ones. Hannah? Well, come on up, Hannah. Is this Dad?
Yes.
Dad? Dad, you're not going anywhere. Come on up. And who's this? Mom? There we go. Is that everybody, or is there more? Are you sure? It was kind of like the clowns getting out of a little car. Yes, Chief?
Mayor, I'd like to bring up the chief officers in the back, too.
Sure, of course. Come on up, guys. Come join us. Well, look who's here. Neil, how are you? Anybody else? You think we're good? Let me just read this first before we do the pinning. This is from the Oviedo Fire Rescue. Lieutenant Promotion is hereby presented to Raul Nin for your excellence in service, having successfully achieving the rank of Lieutenant, Paramedic, and hereby recognized by the Oviedo City Council, July 17th, 2017. This is signed by your chief. We'll have your wife pin you. Now, I will tell you, I've been at some of these where you've gotten stuck, so we'll see if that happens tonight. Yeah, well, she's doing good so far. But like Chief said, we have plenty of paramedics here to take care of it, so. We're just going to let it hang. There we go. Congratulations, folks.[556.48][556.48](applause) Thank you for sharing your son with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, this will be a big one. Get the family up front, though. Chief, why don't you all go up front with everybody? Right up here, guys. Chief, why don't you bring everybody up front, the little guys? Go ahead. We'll get all around you. You've got big, tall firemen, they can come in. Megan and I will just stand off to the side so you can see us. Thank you. Congratulations. Alrighty, we have one more ceremonial item, I believe. No, two more. Two more. Next one up is Chief Chudnows.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Chief Beavers, come on up. Earlier this month, we had the, I had the pleasure of mourning. This is Mike Beavers from Lieutenant Deputy Chief. Mike's been with the department since 1992. He has been virtually all over the department. He spent some time as an agent with DEA. He was in patrol, criminal investigations, and internal affairs. This is possible with one retirement, so we had his pinning where he was, was he, earlier, but I would just want to bring him in front of the Council to be recognized.
Excellent, Chief. Thank you. Great job.[690.24][690.24](applause) Also, did you mention that he just graduated from the FBI Academy?
Just did.
He just did, right? Tell us about that.
Deputy Chief Beavers selected to attend the FBI National Academy at the FBI Training Facility up in Virginia. It is 10 weeks of everything from classroom to physical training. It's quite a grueling experience, and he came out with flying colors.
Terrific. Great job.[726.88][726.88](applause) You know, for those who don't know Deputy Chief, he is an Oviedo resident. You've lived here as long as I can remember, right? I've been here 17 years on Council. You've been here as long, if not longer.
Been in the city proper for about 10 years.
Right, about 10 years. So, I mean, they serve our city well, all of our firemen, policemen, I mean, the job that you all do day in, day out, putting your lives ahead of ours and ahead of the citizens, keeping the city safe. We just can never, ever thank everybody enough, and that's why we take these few moments of our time to say thank you. So, great job, Mike, Deputy Chief. Tracy, I'm sure you're very proud of him. And do you want to say anything, Mike? I know you're a man of few words sometimes.
I'm just grateful for the opportunity, and I want to thank my wife for being behind my side for the last 30 years. So, without her support, I couldn't do it.
That is terrific. Give him a big round of applause.[786.40][786.40](applause) When Mike was the Public Information Officer, that's about how much information he used to give everybody. So, he was a man of few words. But Chief, anything else? Or you're good? Mike, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Tracy? Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's get a picture. We'll get everybody up front. Mike, why don't you get up? We'll just kind of move up just a little. There you go, Tracy. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. And Council, don't go anywhere. We have one more. Yes, we do. This one is Drew's. Come on, this is the fun one we get to do every year. A lot of what we get to do is fun. Ready, Drew? There you go.
Thanks, sir. Good evening. Tonight, we're celebrating our donation of our annual check to American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. At this time, I'd like to call Tab Bartlett, who's the Community Development Manager and our area rep, also Elizabeth Watkins, who's the Senior Management Community Development, and next year's Chair, Lee Jen O'Leary. Before we do the unveiling of how much we raised this year, I just want to give a few facts. I always like to do this, and I'll let, I'll put Tab on the spot and ask him to say a few words also. Since 2010, we've donated $137,521, and that comes from our annual golf tournament, city employees doing such things as paying for, to wear jeans on Fridays, jean day, as we call it, Cheese Steak Fridays, different fundraisers that we do throughout the city, throughout the entire year. So with this year, I think Tab was looking for a few extra dollars. I know he's at, going into tonight, they've raised, now this is Winter Springs, Oviedo, $73,510, correct? Last year, Oviedo Winter Springs total, 2016 totals, was $94,481 total, in which we donated $20,000 last year. So, I'll ask the mayor if he'll come over, and Tab, if both of you can, one grab on one end and one on the other, and we will unveil how much we were able to donate this year.
One, two, three.
So, yeah. He actually, he uses it for wallpaper in his office, so.
Well, the trick is getting the real one from Drew.
Yeah, that comes later. So, if my calculation, now I'm a rec major, not a mathematician, but if my total's right, we exceeded last year's total by $4,029. And it now brings the total that we've brought to relay or donated since 2010 to $162,521. Oh, yeah, we'll do that afterwards. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and have Tab say a few things about Relay and some information concerning that.
Very good. I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you to everyone that's in the room, the Council, the mayor, Drew, his staff. Republic, you'll get yours, I think, from Drew here in a second, but it's such a wonderful thing to be a part of, and, you know, it was kind of fitting that we started with people doing lifesaving work, whether it's fire or police, because I truly, not on the same level, not nearly as heroic, but I do feel like what we do is lifesaving as well. And I can literally talk for 30 minutes about stats and statistics and everything about what we do at the ACS, but what I like to talk about, and what I'm going to talk about today, is this lady right down here in the hat. Back in 1999, her husband was diagnosed with cancer. He was 25, and for 10 years, he battled, and he lost his battle. But in 2000, they started relaying, and they haven't left. And this year, she's going to be our event chair. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but that's a long time. She's been doing this a lot longer than I have, and I think even longer than the city has. But the point is, it all came full circle for her this year, her mother-in-law. They were in our wig room getting free wigs because of the battle that she's going through. And that just speaks to it, and I, obviously, I don't think all of you have time to come and sit in our lobby, but I think if you had the opportunity to do so, and you see the faces and the people that live right here in our communities, they come in, they get free wigs, hats, they get rides to and from treatment, they go to our Hope Lodges, or they call our 1-800 number and get discounted or free night stays at hotels that we've partnered with, so that they can not have to worry about the financial burden of seeking treatment. And then, of course, there's the whole research aspect, but there's so much money that's kept right here that supports our communities, and I'm so proud to be a part of it. I'm so thrilled to have the City of Oviedo as a community partner with us, and the total, obviously, not reflecting this, but the city represents about 16% of the money that we've raised since 2010, which is a grand total of $870,356 in Oviedo and Winter Springs combined. So, big round to the community and to the city for being such a great partner.
Well, you know, we always enjoy this. You know that we're always going to be behind you, not only now, but well into the future. The events and the city staff just rallies behind this each and every year, and these checks just keep getting bigger and bigger, and I can't wait for next year's check, because it's going to be bigger than this one. So, great job. Let me turn it back over to Drew. Drew, we're counting on you. I want to be here next year, and I want this check to be bigger. We can do it.
That is true. That is true. No, I want to also take the time to thank, of course, Council, City Manager Brian Cobb, and then all city staff. It's really an effort on an annual basis. At this time, I'd also like to bring up our annual yearly highest sponsor, which is Republic Services, and Bryant Thornton and Don Collins, if you'd come up, please. Once again, Republic was our highest sponsor. They donated $6,000 to the Relay for Life Golf Tournament. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to present you with this plaque. It reads, "City of Oviedo and American Cancer Society would like to recognize our title sponsor, Republic Services, for your continued support of Relay for Life Golf out in 2017."
And I would also like to present this to the mayor and/or Drew, both of you, with deep appreciation for the outstanding support and the fight against cancer, so.
And folks, you know, it would, we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Republic one more time. I mean, not only they do a great job picking up our trash each and every week, but they are just exceptional community partners, and it doesn't end with them here. They are involved throughout the city, our Parks and Rec, so again, give them a round of applause. And also, Sean, this year, buddy, you stepped up. You were everywhere on that golf course that day. You made the event exceptional, incredible, keeping it all going. So thank you so much to you and your entire staff, and give the Parks and Rec staff a big round of applause. And of course, we have to thank Drew. We can't forget Drew, because he's the one who makes it all happen. Mr. Mayor, if I can for just a second. Chief White, said a quick thing. You know, we're talking about American Cancer Society, and he's gone now, but I was going to embarrass him and bring him up, but it was so good to see Chief Neil Huggins in here. You've probably all seen on Facebook, Chief Huggins went through a very horrible cancer battle that he won, and it's folks like them that find treatment and things that help him. But to see Chief Huggins in here tonight, back in his uniform, after a really, really tough diagnosis that he beat, I mean, it was just incredible, so with the cancer theme here tonight, so all your prayers, the Facebook messages, everything, it worked, so it was good to see him here tonight, Chief, so. Cannot disagree with that. When did Neil come back? Oh, jeez. Well, that was exceptional to see him come back in here, and Deputy Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. Alrighty, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes for June 19th, 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so. So moved? Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, so we're going to move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. I have two written requests this evening. These are for items that are on the agenda. I have a couple of written requests for an item later on. I'll get to those then. The first one is Barry Kamek. Barry, how are you tonight?
I'm doing fine. Happy Monday.
Same to you, sir. We just need your name and address for the record, and then you-
My name is Barry Kamek. I live at 835 Palmetto Street in Garden Grove in Oviedo. I've been a resident since 1989. The purpose of my meeting tonight with the Council is, for 29 years, the power, the quality of power from the power companies in my neighborhood is substandard. It's not equal to the rest of the areas of this city. Excuses for power failures have been squirrels, chickens, birds, and lions, as well as standard go-to excuses of tree limbs. The power goes out whether it's blue skies, gray skies, rainy, or not. Sent formal complaint to the Public Service Commission in 2010 January. Received a reply from Progress Energy stating that putting the power lines underground would not improve our power. There'd still be problems, that trees would not be the only problem. Yet, it's always trees. Hurricanes, Hurricane Charlie in 2004, we were out of power for five days. Why? Trees and power lines. You think someone would have learned from 2004 and improved our power lines? No, we had Hurricane Matthew in 2016, two days without power, and now not only do we have Garden Grove, but we have Lake Charm Country Estates, we couldn't even get out of our subdivisions because of a live wire in the street. That's not acceptable. I don't know if anybody here had the opportunity to watch the NBA Finals. I sat down at 7:30 PM to watch the game. At 7:41 PM, my power went out for the fifth time, not in a year, not in a month, not in a week, not in a day, in less than five hours. My power went out in less than, five times less than five hours. We now have a problem with our underground cables. Our subdivision was built in 1973. Our underground cables, which are the heart of our power supply, are failing, and Duke Energy knows it. We have 57 homes in our subdivision. 22 of those homes are senior citizens. Of those 22 homes, three are people 80 years old or above. We have a widower who has a designated power cable that has failed, and his line in front of the house for public service for our streetlights has also failed. Duke has yet to replace it. On June 9th, we had another cable fail in Keystone Court. 22 homes were affected and out of power for two hours. I spoke to Duke on Monday, the 10th. They were going to replace the cable. It hasn't been done. They said they were going to replace all the cables in the subdivision, but the young lady I spoke to wasn't aware that we had 57 homes, and I've yet to hear from her since. I had, I was very frustrated, so I sent an email off to Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, thank you very much. Said to Mr. Boop, matter of fact, the City of Oviedo makes city money off the residents. We're going to the power companies, and yes, the city does. It receives two forms of income. So I'm here tonight because I don't understand why the city, for 28 years, hasn't helped us. I don't understand why they haven't helped us, but that's not the point. Let's move forward. So I'm here tonight to step back from fighting this for the residents, and I'm here to ask you, Mayor, and the Council, to take the fight for us. What I want is the same quality of power that everybody else in this city has. That's not too much to ask for. I know tonight you were voting on some repairs and improvements to Garden Grove. We're an old subdivision, and we appreciate that. That's going to bring the quality of our subdivision up, and we thank you. But we still have some items we need, and something as simple as power, we should be able to have the same quality that every one of you have in your homes, that when you turn your TVs on and your air conditioners, ours are going to be turned on, too. So I thank you very, very much for listening to me. I appreciate any time anything you could do for us, and I'll be glad to help you in any way possible to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Our pleasure, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Didn't realize it was at this point, but Mr. Cobb, you have an email that you can share with us? You have an email for Mr. Kamek that you can share with the Council?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to.
Okay, good. And perhaps we'll get in touch with, well, send it along, and I'll call Duke.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, I have a similar request from Donna Benson.
I was going to defer my time to Mr. Kamek, but you needed it. Do you have all the specific stuff?
All righty, so just for the record, you're not a fan of Duke right now either, and not sending them any Christmas cards soon.
I just never saw squirrels do so much.
All righty. Well, again, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we know the government relations folks over there, and we have legislative aides on staff, so we'll get it addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That is the end of the written request that I had for comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on any item that is not on our agenda this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I am going to close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Tonight, our consent agenda are items seven through 14. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, seven through 14.
Second? We have a motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir. It looks good.
Who is the second?
I was...
You're good? All righty. Anything from... Off to my right?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on item seven.
Sure.
It's about the repaving of the roads, but it also, there was 50, I think it was $56,000 for the repaving of the parking lot for the golf course. And I understand the need for the, you know, improving the golf course, but I'm not sure if that money should be spent at this time for the repaving of the parking lot for the golf course. So, if I could, I would ask to have the item pulled if the motion or the second or would like, and have that part of it removed from the paving, repaving.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can defer it.
Pull it off?
Yeah.
He wants to pull it off.
You just made my day.
Wants to pull it off and make it 14A. Is that what we're saying, councilman?
Yes, I got it. 14A. Okay, so we're going to move item seven to 14A. Anything else? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Is this with... Are we still in comments, or is this approving consent agenda? I didn't quite follow.
No, no, just follow me along.
Okay.
I'll get you there.
All right.
All righty, so now we're going on to item 14A, which is resolution number 3435-17. Mr. Cobb?
Oh, but we went too fast. I still am an aye, but if I could, Mr. Mayor, on item 11, there's the FDIP grant application. I just wanted to make sure that as we approve this, our plan is to...
We already voted to approve it.
I know, but we need to cover our share of the grant.
Okay.
So, because that has been an issue in the past. All right, so 14A. Thank you.
Okay. All right. 14A. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to award bid number 17-21 for the annual road resurfacing project to Preferred Materials Inc. in the amount of $657,089. The city's payment management system is designed to evaluate the city streets and determine the appropriate preventative maintenance measures. On April 30th of 2017, the city advertised bid number 17-21 for the road resurfacing project. A total of five bids were received. The lowest base bid was from Preferred Materials in the amount of $598,728.29. In addition to the base bid, the resolution does include an alternate amount of $58,272.60 for the resurfacing of the Twin Rivers Golf Course parking lot. This would bring the total award to $657,089. Staff recommends approval of awarding the bid to Preferred Materials, who is the lowest responsive bidder and the best able to perform the project. The resolution also includes authorization to utilize any remaining 1617 budgeted funds for any additional resurfacing projects. As you know, in the past, if we are able to complete the designated roadways, we do move on. If we have monies left over, we do move on to the next ones on the list. The budgeted funds for this year are $800,000 in fund 105 and 304. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 3435-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Pollak, you had questions, so I'll defer to you.
I just... Do we need to make a motion yet, or do we...
You can do discussion first because then that'll drive what the motion may or may not be.
Okay. The $58,000 for the golf course parking lot, I didn't see a need for it. I think that the $58,000 could be used to resurface other roads. I'm not saying to reduce the amount of money. I'm just saying that it could be used for other roads. I don't know if the golf course parking lot at this time needs to be resurfaced. I know that we're trying to make everything better there, but I don't think the parking lot really makes a difference in whether the golf course itself is successful or not.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody else want to buy it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Sure, of course.
Brian, could I ask Bobby a few questions on the paving assessment?
Oh, yes, sir.
And just for everyone's information, I believe we've done a new paving assessment of the existing roads. Is that correct?
It's almost done.
Almost done?
Yes, sir.
And the roads we're doing now, then I assume, have been ranked from the previous assessment?
Yeah, this is... Yes, sir. We essentially have this year, and I think there's four years remaining. The next two years finish off the old Oviedo, what I call the old Oviedo, which is west of the river.
Okay.
The assessment, looking at the map, it's basically set up green, yellow, and red. It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Green meaning good, yellow meaning fair, red's bad. There's not much red at all left, and we're about to hit half of it in this current fiscal year, if it's approved tonight. What we're doing with the assessment and what we're waiting on is they're setting up our next 10-year schedule for us.
Okay.
Because we need to add it for Mr. Boop for the budget, and so we're trying to finish it off.
For Bob, for your information, that's what we've been doing for the last 10 years. We did a detailed assessment 10 years ago, ranked everything, and what's the number? 60? Anything below 60 gets on the list, or...
Yes, sir. Well, everything's on the list, but anything, you know, 60 gets priority.
That's how we prioritize it. Maybe to Bob's point, the parking lot probably wasn't on the original assessment.
We added it as an alternate, but I will tell you, from a price standpoint, you're not going to see this price tonnage for asphalt for a while. It's a very... We got a very good price on the bid.
Okay.
Bobby?
It's quite a bit of area. I'm looking at this. Parking lot and the maintenance area, it looks like.
Yeah.
Did we...
Just one second. Let me just see. Anything else?
No, not...
Deputy Mayor?
Bobby, did we hit the parking lot of the golf course with the pavement, actual sonar and look down on it? See?
No, sir. That was not part of the assessment. It happened prior to the whole purchase.
Not in there. Okay.
Anything else?
What was the reason for putting it in? You got a good deal on it?
Just to see what the price was going to be.
Okay.
It's maintenance, an item that's going to be needed to be done at some point.
Are there other roads that we could put on the list?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's part of our resolution, was asking to go ahead and spend our entire budget because we came in low, to go ahead and eat into next year, if at all possible. If we can get the contractor to agree to the same tonnage price.
Okay. Then, yeah, I suggest we pull off the parking lot and have them just put the next streets on the list, use the funds.
It's fine by me.
Councilor?
You guys are making my day. I didn't have to say anything.
Good. All right, I'm going to throw out the alternative argument, just for the sake of it here. What's your total budget for road resurfacing?
It's $815,000, I think it was.
All righty. When I look at the bids, this bid came in much less...
Absolutely.
Than all the other bids.
Yes, sir.
I mean...
We vetted it with the contractor.
You had them all the way up to $750,000, it seems like.
It was up to $95 a ton.
Right.
This one was 80.
And you're getting, from the look of the map, just about 90% of Little Creek's getting done.
Mm-hmm.
Parts of Alephaya, and I see a whole bunch of other sections being done, I guess have been identified over the years with the pavement assessment, as Councilman Britton pointed out. So, at that price, even if we do this road, you still have another $150,000 that you could conceivably go spend if they honor the contract bid price. Is that what you're telling us?
Correct.
Say that again. The budget that they have is 800,000. The bid includes the parking lot. Just because we take the parking lot out and try to add another road doesn't necessarily mean they're going to honor that bid price. What Bobby said was he was going to go to the contractor and see if he could spend the other $150,000 and get them to honor the bid price.
That's exactly correct. We already had a gap already, or a savings that we want to try and capitalize on.
Right.
We got a good price.
So, the budget was 850, and we got a bid in at, what, 700?
598.
How much is 598?
657. It was a total, including the golf course.
Right. Just the roads that we bid came in at 598. You know, so all the roads that are in the CIP, which are all the roads being done, it doesn't look like you've deferred any of them.
No.
No. So, the bid, they had an $800,000 budget. The bid came in at 598, so they took advantage of the low bid and said to them, hey, would you add in the parking lot? And they evidently agreed to it.
Yes, sir. This is...
For $58,000.
Correct. We did defer one thing, just FYI, in case you're asked, and I already spoke to Mr. Kamek about this earlier, is because we are doing Garden Grove for approval for the improvements there, we deferred it for the next fiscal year, just because I don't want to pave the road and open back up again. That would look silly.
Right, because we're doing the drainage up there, if I remember, right?
Yep.
The drainage was an issue, it was flooding down at the bottom, or something like that.
Yeah, that's a secret problem on the roads, but it's next year.
Well, you hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater, Bob, but if it's a good deal, it's going to have to be done anyway, sooner or later. I think it could last a year, but it's not in that great a shape, anyway.
I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but... But let me ask a question. If we were to continue this until the next meeting, are you able to go have a conversation with the pavement company and see if they'll honor the bid for more roads? Because I think, really, that's the goal here, and the goal, that's a great goal.
We could certainly ask a question between now and the next meeting. Absolutely.
Would everybody be comfortable with that? So, that way, we have a big picture?
Sure.
Right? If they honor the tonnage price, they want to do more roads.
Let me ask the city engineer one question, just to make sure. They have a crew ready to go as soon as you get approval, as soon as you give approval. That's the only...
They're sure another job is there.
Okay. They're waiting to go.
They're mobilized.
Getting ready, yeah. Yes, sir, essentially.
And the parking lot was an option? Does it have a time period where it expires?
Could you have them do the parking lot last, maybe, while you have this discussion with them, and then bring that back to us at the next meeting?
Well, we could... Or you could pull it out, and then we could always come back to you and try and bring it back in.
Okay.
Or add it back if we have enough savings.
I thought we were buying by the yard per the budget, and we could reallocate that. But if we got such a good price on it, maybe it's not something we should pass up.
You know, one of the things, Bobby, I completely understand both sides of the coin here, but I don't know where that machine is, but we've always said with the pavement management, we're going to take it by the way the ranking came in, and we're not going to make it a staff decision or political decision or whatever. And I'd like to know the condition of that versus a street that hasn't been paved, you know. I mean, it doesn't look very nice. It is our park. The public is going in there. It has the public benefit, but, you know, do they have that machine that they can take a peek at it?
That parking lot is focal.
You can do a visual and not have radar.
This is interesting. Either way, we're good. We're happy with the price.
That parking lot probably hasn't been paved since they built the golf course.
Probably not, no, sir.
Yeah.
Well, it's 30-some odd years.
All righty, so let's formulate what you think we can do here, Bobby. So, we can approve the bid contract. Make the motion, and I guess maybe this is for Mr. Colbert and Mr. Cobb, of course, also. Make the motion that you defer the parking lot until you have further discussion with the paving company, see if they'll honor the price so that we can get more roads done. Does that make sense, Mr. Cobb, Mr. Colbert?
Yes, sir. I think a motion would be to approve the bid contract except for the parking lot at the golf course and bring that back after further review.
All righty. That is a motion. Does anyone agree with it?
Some move.
All right. Some move. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. So, essentially, that just formulated what we did. So, you're going to defer on the parking lot until you have further discussion, because we don't mind you doing the parking lot at this great price. We don't want you to lose that, but we want to see if we can do more roads.
I just want to make sure the council's good with us going ahead and using the additional budget for regular streets to hit the stuff on the list.
Knock it out?
Yeah, that's what the list is for.
And potentially switching to roads instead of the parking lot. So, that would be a discussion for the next meeting? Just make sure we're all on the same page.
We would come back towards the end if we have monies left and think that the best option left would be the parking lot. Otherwise, we'll just keep doing streets.
And they're going to have a discussion with the contractor to see if they can get them to honor the bid price on the roads bid for more streets, and then if they can do more streets at this exceptional price with the other $150,000, and we get ahead of the curve a little bit, then doing the parking lot becomes a moot point. Might as well save the money and just do it.
If it's practical.
Yeah. So, all righty, well, we appreciate it. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Bobby, you're good? Mr. Cobb, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Colbert, you made the motion, so you're good, right?
I'm okay.
Just wanted to check. And welcome, Mr. Colbert. It's always great to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All righty, motion on the table as amended. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 15 now. Number 15, 15, 15. Ordinance number 1654. Mr. Colbert, can you read that one by title only for us, please?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida Establishing and Imposing a Temporary Moratorium Within the City of Oviedo on the Effects of Committee Substitute for Committee Substitute for House Bill 687," passed by the Florida Legislature during the recently ended 2017 legislative session, prohibiting any and all approvals during the moratorium period for any right-of-way located within the City of Oviedo in order to allow opportunity for the city to develop an ordinance as appropriate relating to the impacts of the legislation, providing for legislative administrative findings, providing for geographic area encompassed by the moratorium, providing for implementing administrative for Geographic Area Encompassed by the Moratorium, Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions, Providing for Savings Provision, Providing for Non-Godification, As Well as the Correction of Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cobb, enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading and first public hearing for ordinance number 1654. If you remember, the first reading was held on, at your June 19th meeting when Mr. Groot read the, the ordinance into the, into the record and the council consensus was to initiate zoning in progress. The House, the bill that was approved was approved by the House on April the 28th and subsequently passed the same day by the Senate. The governor also approved the bill and it became effective on July the 1st. The Act amends the statutes relating to the use of public right-of-way and structures located within the right-of-way, particularly for wireless utility companies to utilize poles within the right-of-way. With limited exceptions, the Act provides for installation of small wireless facilities on government-owned poles and other poles and structures located in the right-of-way. The, generally a government, when there, when they, the utility comes in to apply for a permit, the government has 60 days to either approve or deny. If the government does not take any action, the application is, is automatically approved. The Act does a number of other things that provides rules in which the governments may be able to have some type of local control over these, these different facilities. The ordinance 1654 establishes a temporary moratorium that will last until September 30th of 2017. During that time, no applications for these types of facilities would be accepted by the city. The staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1654. The local planning agency will conduct a public hearing on July the 25th, and then council will conduct its third reading and final public hearing at its August 7th meeting. The zoning in progress document took effect on June the 19th. The effect of the moratorium was, is now in effect and the staff will not process any applications during, under the Act until the moratorium expires. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and then schedule a second public hearing for August 7th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment, and as Mr. Cobb mentioned, it is a public hearing, I have no reading requests. Anybody in the audience want to address counsel on 1654? Seeing and hearing them, we're going to close the public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 1654 on August 7th, 2017, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Councilwoman, you have the floor.
I'm just concerned about them tapping into the power in these with the water, but that's something for, for another, another discussion as staff develops all of these rules.
Anything else?
That's it.
Counselor?
I don't have anything to add.
I'm sorry?
I don't have anything to add. It looks like.
Councilman Britton, anything?
Well, yeah, I don't, I'm not a, an IT expert, but this technology seems to change every other year. So the flavor, I guess, this year is these micro wireless devices, and I think we're, we're being prudent, we're going to have another discussion about being prudent and waiting and getting it right the first time before we, we jump in and allow something like this to happen. So let's go ahead and, and do our due diligence and, and see what this is all about and see what the impacts are going to be.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I just want to give you some, some food for thought for the next one, but, you know, this, this, us putting a moratorium on this, in my, in my view, I mean, this is kind of what I, what I do, and I think it's really not a good idea. I think the county has just basically said they're letting it fly through. I realize we'll have another discussion, but in my view, this is, this is good for everybody because, you know, if you all remember a couple of years ago when AT&amp;T strung all that fiber out on 419, did anybody care or even notice? You know, most of these broadband companies, when they're out there working, they hang their stuff, you know, very professionally, it costs millions of dollars and they don't want it, you know, tampered with. So, you know, you all hear people complaining about this cable company, this wireless provider. This is going to give you so much more choice, so it's where I, I don't like when the legislature impedes on our home rule. This, in this one, I'm going to agree with them because this, you know, basically gives you more competition, lower, lower prices for, for our residents. I think this is actually a good thing, and frankly, we don't own any of the poles, you know? And for years, lots of places around the country, you know, they used to have to go get approvals from local governments, but now people can basically just, as long as they do it within, you know, the code that they have to do it, they can put the wires up there. But we have multiple providers here now and you don't even notice it, and it's actually, actually working out well. So just some food for thought for the next one. I think they, they might have this one right, so.
Great. Mr. Cobb, can you give us some examples on what right-of-ways that we're concerned about or poles per se that we own, that we're, we're, not we, the city owns?
Well, as far as right-of-ways, obviously our jurisdiction will be our local city streets. And I think also, looking at the, at the law, it will also affect any county right-of-ways. Mr. Colbert, I may need some help from Mr. Colbert, but it looks to me like state right-of-ways were exempted from it. There is a definition of authority, and the authority means the county or the municipality. There's also a definition of an authority utility pole, which means a utility pole owned by an authority in a right-of-way. The city does own a few streetlight poles. Most of them are on Franklin Street between 434 and the roundabout, and then from the roundabout on Oviedo Boulevard, from the roundabout to 419. I also believe we own some poles possibly on Oviedo Boulevard. The ornate poles, those are the ones I believe that we own. Most of the other poles are, as, as far as streetlights, we lease them from the power companies. So I'm not so sure that, other than doing work in a right-of-way, I'm not so sure that those poles are actually in this, in this act. The poles that I know, I've talked to the power companies before and they said, well, that's not our pole, that's owned by the telephone company. You go to the telephone company and they'll say it's owned by the cable company. It's, but as far as our streetlights are concerned, we do lease them. All, most of them, except for the ones I mentioned before. And there are certain things that, you know, like I said, I think our biggest thing is making sure that we have the right permitting process, that when they come in to do work in our right-of-way, that we know what they're doing, how they're doing it, you know, within the limitations that's been placed on us within the statute.
So, if I remember this correctly, they're, they capped the fee that we could charge for the permit. Am I correct with that? It was like, it was minimal. So this isn't about the fee.
No, sir.
From, from staff's perspective. So this is more about that when they're putting a pole in the ground, that we're able to go out and just make sure we don't have utilities or anything else in the ground.
That.
But, but wouldn't they have to do that, like that 811 to dig or whatever and get them all marked?
We would hope they would do that. But you're right, Mayor, the fee is set at $150.
I mean, because the, the struggle is, for me, is state roads, 426, county road, 419. You know, we're not talking, you know, the right-of-way would be for us Mitchell Hammock, but, you know, then we have all these telephone poles, electric poles down the center, which they're able to use, if I read it correctly.
It appears that way, yes.
I, you know, I don't know. I, I, I may be willing to let this go into a, our second hearing, but I think we need more information from staff on this one, because it's, it's 5G technology and I, and I think, you know, as, as much as the, the state sometimes pushes things down upon us, you know, maybe, maybe with this one, they're just trying to roll out new technology. It would be nice to have, you know, high-speed wireless and have some alternatives to the current providers we have. Not to say that any of us would use it, switch, but we don't know until we have it. So that, that would be my position. You know, I'd, I'd be willing to let this go to the second hearing, but for me personally, I, I'd like to see a map, see what we're concerned about, see what poles we're concerned about, and really have somebody give us an analysis on, you know, what are we trying to protect ourselves from? If anything, I mean, so.
You know, Mr. Mayor, and also from the, from the, you know, just from, from what I've seen over a long period of time in that, in that industry, most reputable companies would not hang equipment from light poles. And if they do, you really want to question whether you're going to use their service. Most, most professional people are underground and they're going to use the existing electric, you know, or telephone company poles, so. And I think the mayor made a really good point. I mean, you may not want to switch, but it'd be nice to have some choices. But I would expect that if this goes in, that you'll have companies come in and it'll be done professionally, because it happens all over the country. I see it and things are nice. And you recall a couple of years ago, and they never did it, but some of us were, were sitting up here when AT&amp;T, or I think it was AT&amp;T.
Yeah, they built all the fiber.
They were going to build us a fiber network with, you know, gigabit ethernet, which is, you know, 1,000 megabits a second. You know, we're lucky, we have 60 right now, and we were all on board with that, and they were just going to run it on us. We were all like, hey, great. So this is really no different, so I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, and then piggybacking on what Deputy Mayor is saying, I mean, we don't even know what kind of equipment we're, we're talking about here. It's, you drive around and Bright House has nodes tied to every single light pole everywhere. I mean, throughout. There, there isn't, there isn't a pole that doesn't have that little square Bright House box on it, so, which is kind of funny, we all should be putting our phones down as we're driving around, but I guess that's another story for another day. But I, I would just like a little bit, myself personally, just more information, and then we'll see what happens on August 7th. You know, if it's strictly locate, well, you know, let's call it strictly locate, which is reasonable, you know, if it's, you know, anything else, I don't know. I think, I think we've got to let them bring 5G in if they want. I'm making sure they're ready to roll. Who knows? Are they? You would know.
Now, Mr. Mayor?
They're ready to go.
5G is?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
This moratorium is set to end September 30th.
Yeah, it's quick.
It's, it's really fast, and there are some concerns. I, just driving here, there are three different kinds of poles on Oviedo Boulevard, and to set a standard height to give staff enough time to just go around and look at everything, it seems like a reasonable amount of time. I, I wouldn't be in favor of, you know, passing it a second time, by no means, but the first time, I think it's reasonable.
I, I just want to kind of see it on a map, you know, see, see just what we're dealing with, what the real concerns are. You know, and Mr. Groot had some valid issues at our, our last meeting, and, you know, which is why we moved forward with it. I'm sorry, Mr. Colbert, you want to add something?
I was just going to say, not trying to insert myself in the discussion, but there are other cities that we represent who've had a, had a similar discussion, and most of them have done moratoriums. I asked one of our other cities, well, just how big a deal is this going to be? And he said, Mr. Colbert, we already have a stack of applications to that high that to use our poles, and we're just trying to get a little bit of time until we can get a procedure in place to handle it. And I don't know if the city of Oviedo has any applications, but some cities have a substantial number.
Maybe that's information that, excuse me, maybe that's information staff can provide us for the next hearing.
Mr. Cobb, you could also, if you, when you bring it back to August 7th, you know, to ease some of the concerns of, of the rest of the council, find out the process that AT&amp;T went, when they strung all the fiber out on 419, because if I recall.
Didn't they bury?
No, they have some up in the air, up, you know, by Willingham, and some they have, you know, jacked under, underground, but there's main feeders along 419 that they ran. But find out the process that they went in there, because it's my understanding that if the, they get permission, they didn't get our permission for that when they, when they, when they put that in. I'm not even sure they came in. I think they just, I think they just ran it.
I think if they did get permission, it would have been from the county, since it is a county right-of-way.
Right.
So they, I don't know if there would have been any notice to us at all.
And you may want to check with the county, because I spoke to Commissioner Delary today, and he basically said that they're just flying with this, you know, so.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's make it consistent. I like that idea. Anything from anyone else? All right, so it looks like we're going to get you off to a second hearing, Mr. Cobb, under staff's recommendation, but it does look like we've got a little bit of homework to bring back to us so we can just.
I think you need to vote.
Yeah, I think we did that yet.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we voted yet.
No, I didn't, we didn't vote. I was just, I was just wrapping up our discussion.
Okay.
But we're going to need more information when we get to that time. All right? All righty, all that being said, the motion on the table is scheduled next public hearing on August 7th, 2017, here in the city council chambers. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vows. Motion carries. All righty, moving along, we're up to item number 16, which is ordinance number 1651, Oviedo Point Annexation. Mr. Colbert, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, sir. This, the title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition, certain real property approximately 18.21 acres in size, generally located on the south side, Mitchell Hammock Road, approximately 300 feet east of State Road 426, located contiguous to the city of Oviedo in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, redefining, pardon me, redefining the boundaries of the city to include said property, providing for findings, providing for conditions, directing the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, with the chief administrative office of Seminole County, with the Department of State, providing for a legal description and a map, providing for a savings provision, ratification of acts, acknowledgement of inclusion of lands within the city municipal boundaries with Seminole County, to continue certain permitting and related activities, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for non-godification, the taking of administrative actions, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Excuse me, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to annex approximately 18.21 acres located on the south side of Mitchell Hammock Road, approximately 300 feet east of State Route 426. This is the property that's being developed and is immediately east of the Wawa property. To annex a piece of land in the state of Florida, there's two ways to do it. You either have it as voluntary or involuntary. Voluntary is when you have an applicant, application from the property owner. This isn't, this is a voluntary annexation. There are three criteria that must be met in order for a property to be annexed. One, it must be contiguous to your corporate boundary, which this property is. It must be reasonably compact, which this property is. And then the result of the annexation cannot create an enclave, which is an unincorporated land surrounded by incorporated land. This property does not, the annexation of this property will not create an enclave. If you'll recall, June 15th, 2015, we did enter into a annexation agreement with the property owner that set forth a number of terms and conditions, one of which was that the property would annex after the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy of the first building or within two years. It has been two years, and so therefore we are bringing the annexation forward. The city attorney has reviewed the ordinance and recommends approval, and the staff also recommends approval. It's recommended that the city council schedule a public hearing for August the 7th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, and it's my understanding that the applicant had made us aware that they were unable to be here this evening, but they'll be here at the next hearing?
Yes, sir, they cannot attend tonight.
Great. All righty, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 7th, 2017, on ordinance number 1651, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Good. I just want to say one thing, and three of us were here when, when this occurred, two, two were not, but Mr. Cobb and Dr. Groot did a great job with this. It was, and Mr. Groot and also Mr. Colbert, putting the agreements together, because that, that piece of land was a county, was in the county with the billboard, and the billboard was the challenge, and we were able to overcome allowing that billboard to stay on county land and bring that property and that tax base into our city, because we would have had all the impact with none of the tax base, were you not able to work all of that out with the developer and his team. Now, I do realize that you needed access to Mitchell Hammock Road, so we had a little bit of a hammer, but it was nice that it worked out and we were able to have it all set out, you know, before they actually started construction, you know, because unfortunately, we have many other areas on the little edges and borders of our city like that, where, you know, we have all the impact and we have none of the tax revenue. I mean, most people don't realize Home Depot, Target, Lowe's, TJ Maxx, everything else up and down, Redbug in that vicinity, other than the mall and Florida Hospital and our hospital are not in the city, so it's all fractured over there. So just wanted to mention that. It was an excellent job to get it all lined up with Mr. Stahl and his crew. Well, that being said, anybody have anything else?
I just had a question, Mr. Cobb.
Sure.
I, I was just, I just wanted to inquire why they waited till after they constructed it for the annexation then before? Was, was there a code difference that they wanted to overcome?
They actually followed all of our code. They just, I think it had something to do with the billboard in the county.
Well, there was a little bit on the billboard side. That was an easy one. We, we were able to work that out. They had already started their, their review process with the county, and they didn't want to have to stop and restart with us. And so that was when we said, well, let's start work. We began working on the pre-annexation agreement. And there, there probably were some items that in the city code that was probably more restricted than the county code. Most of the time, it deals with landscaping and signage, and, but we did work out through and, but we did work out through the annexation agreement that they would try to adhere to our architectural standards as, as well as they could, which I believe that they worked closely with Dr. Correa and staff, you know, for that. And fortunately, this time, we did get some support from the county when we would ask for things. One of the other things, too, was, at the time, they thought that they were going to be able to pull their utilities from the county. Later on, if you remember, we brought for you a measure to do a water line down, or was it sewer line? Mr. White, was it sewer line or water line we did on Mitchell Hammock?
Sewer line.
The sewer line, yeah. We did the sewer line, where we partnered with them on the south side of Mitchell Hammock, so that they, it would make it easier for them to connect to city sewer. So, but basically, it was, they'd already started with the county, and they just didn't want to stop and restart.
Okay. Yeah, they were already almost through us with Wawa, if I remember at that point. You know, it was all one, same developer on both parcels, but, yeah, staff made that work very well. And, that's right, I forgot about the utilities, because now we have the water and the sewer.
Yes, sir.
All righty, with all that being said, anything else? Hearing none. Motion on table is schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 1651 for August 7th, 2017. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 17, which is ordinance number 1653, Public Art Policy. It's good to see this one here. Mr. Colbert, can you read this by title only, please?
Title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, relating to public arts policy, creating a public arts board, providing for an array of matters relating to the public arts board, such as powers, processes, and procedures, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to formally adopt the public arts policy. If you remember, the council created a public arts committee, and they have been working with Dr. Correa to establish a public arts policy for the city. Councilwoman Sladek was also a member of that committee and working on that ordinance. Rather than take you through this, Ms. Jennifer Webb from the committee is with us tonight, and she has a presentation for you.
Great.
Mayor, after her presentation, our recommendations that you schedule a public hearing for Monday, August 7th, 2017.
Sounds good. Hi, Jennifer, how are you?
Hi, good.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, nice to see everyone as well. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present in front of you today. How do we move slides forward?
Up right over there, you just let Linda know, and she'll move it along.
Yes, please move the next slide, please. During the presentation, we're just going to introduce the public arts committee who worked on the development of the ordinance. We're going to review the current state of the Oviedo art community and its impact on the city. We're going to identify the purpose of the proposed ordinance, and identify the benefit that the ordinance brings to the city of Oviedo. We're going to identify the features of the ordinance, and then ask for any questions, and if you need to bring a motion for approval, we'll do that. The Oviedo Arts Coordinance Committee is comprised of local area artists and citizens, along with city of Oviedo staff, the city council, including Jembi Player, Councilwoman Megan Sladek, along with legal oversight by the city attorneys. The committee met over the past several months to reach similar ordinance, to research similar ordinances, and the impact that civic art support would have upon a community, and then develop the ordinance that is being brought to you today. The listing includes presence in past, actually, this is just the current list of members of the committee. We, as was mentioned, it is established by Resolution 32, 3816 on June 6, where a public art committee would be composed of five to seven members, plus a non-voting city council member. We've met eight times over the course of the year, and that's where we recommended to bring the ordinance that we have for you today. As we all know, Oviedo has received many national accolades on the quality of life that we all enjoy. One of the common themes of these awards is the note of the pride of the community, which brings a strong sense of belonging. The Oviedo art community is a very active, and throughout the years, has produced art which reflects the spirit and character of the city through events and also other public installations. And we're going to show some examples of public art. The Taste of Oviedo is probably the most prominent examples of art in our city. The yearly Taste of Oviedo poster contest held by the Chamber of Commerce has been, since 1995, encouraging Oviedo area residents to create art featuring the city of Oviedo. And here are some examples of what they have. In addition, there are public art installations. You can find these hidden gems throughout, such as Dell Seaman's Artistic Zone, as well as at Black Hammock, and also our latest of Oviedo...
On the floor.
On the block, yes, thank you. Painting and sculpture isn't the only form of art in Oviedo. We have regular movie nights. Dance, food, and music are also featured throughout the city. And as you can tell, this is just a brief sample of the many art examples we have in our city. And the new ordinance, the intent is to enhance and further explore what is already here. Please move forward. And so we're going to review the details of the ordinance. Please move forward. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you.
Sometimes the computer doesn't cooperate.
Oh, okay.
Just have to give it a second.
No problem. The ordinance, this listing here intends to accomplish the following, which is to establish the goals of the public art policy, propose a set of definitions related to public art, establish the rules for the public art board, and the funding that is needed for that board. It's going to propose various fund mechanisms to ensure that the quality of art remains on a high level, establishes that rules of art and pop-up art are projects and not signs, because that was one element that we've run across frequently, and our confusion between what is art and what is a sign. Also, establish process for applying and reviewing for public art presentations. So. I won't go into a lot of detail here, but this is the overall goals of the public art policy. The biggest ones being to encourage and ignite civic engagement, reflect on the diversity of the citizens of Oviedo, foster artist creativity, create placemaking in the city, as well as attract and create a creative workforce, which will benefit everybody in the long run. The public arts board is going to be made up of seven members. We recommend an ex officio non-voting member from the city council, and the board members will appoint, by the city council, various members for a three-year term. The funds can be obtained through different sources, such as private donations, and we have different funding mechanisms to encourage art development. Also, through our public works process, we have recommendations that the art can be funded up to 2% of the total cost, up to the first 500, you know, $50,000 for the first 5 million of our project. I said that wrong. But. We also want to recognize the artists that are there. This is an example from the city of Austin, which is similar in nature to a plaque that would be provided, where the name of the artist, the artwork, the medium that's used, something that is very visible and permanent, so that way the people of Oviedo and those who are visiting can note who the artist of resident, the artist who made the piece was there. And again, this is not considered signage. And so, the benefits of a public arts policy, we already know how much we love art here, and our city has received recognition for this effort. There's a considerable statistical proof that establishing a mechanism to support and develop the arts in the community improves the quality of life, increases the amount of culture and tourism, creates jobs, and brings a sense of pride within a community. As we contribute to a growing trend of other cities throughout central Florida, such as Winter Park, Castleberry, Orlando, and Sanford, who have established their own public arts committee, and funds public art installations, as well as participates in local area events. These cities view art as an investment which increases tourism and local business development. And then the value of public art, we have two values that we see, which is an intrinsic value and an instrumental value. They've seen a return on their investment in public art, where this ordinance is going to further enhance the beauty in the city we already love. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Well, it was, that was a terrific presentation. I remember, we put the board together. Looks like a lot of work and effort went into it, and it's great to see, because many years we've been asked about public art, about some of the blank spaces we have, and not having a policy made it very difficult. So, looks like we're on our way to possibly having one. So, again, you and the committee, great job. Councilwoman, thank you for taking over for Councilman Schenk, and getting us to this point, so.
They did all the heavy lifting.
Pardon?
They did all the heavy lifting.
Well, we appreciate your efforts as well. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, ma'am.
All righty, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 1653 for August 7th, 2017, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, at 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 p.m.
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion?
No.
Nope, looking good. All righty, I will call the vote. All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for August 7th, 6:30 p.m., signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along. All righty, let's get on to number 18. Nope, I'm sorry. No problem. All righty, so next item up is Resolution Number 3442-17, extension of the medical marijuana moratorium. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to extend the existing citywide moratorium on the dispensing of medical cannabis, to include but not limited to medical marijuana treatment centers, established by ordinance number 1646, which was adopted on February the 6th, 2017. That ordinance established a 180-day moratorium. That moratorium is set to expire on August the 5th, 2017. As you know, the legislature recently, in the last session, did a special session, and approved legislation, and created a number of items that affect local governments and the ability to legislate or not legislate medical marijuana treatment facilities, especially dispensing facilities. At your June 19th meeting, it was discussed that the county commission, at their last meeting, were going to reach out to the cities to find out what may have already happened. And they, there seemed to be an opportunity that the county was going to either ban or not ban. The council consensus was that they would wait to see what action the county would take. This proposed extension would extend the moratorium to October 31st, 2017. It's recommended that you adopt Resolution Number 3442-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, anything else?
Now, that's all, ma'am.
Not this time? All righty. I'll open up the public comment portion. I have four written requests to speak on this item, so I'll call them up in the order that they were presented to us. First request to speak is Erica O'Connor. And Erica, we'll need your name and address for the record. There'll be a shot clock up there, we have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Erica O'Connor. I actually live in Seminole County jurisdiction. My address is 844 Brightview Drive, Lake Mary, Florida. Thank you for having me here. This is very nerve-wracking for me, so bear with me. I, I wrote something down, so I won't lose my train of thought in trying, you know, have you guys understand where I'm coming from. I'm actually CEO and founder of Vitano Industries. I'm a little entrepreneur, trying to make a big dream out there. I'm also a full-time student at Seminole State College. I'm working on my bachelor's degree in business, in business, specializing in business information and management systems. I currently have two AA degrees, one for business administration and one for general studies, so I can move forward. Also have two technical certificates, which is for business specialist and business operations, as you can see my, my little jest here, kind of like a trail with business. I am also a wife and a mother of three beautiful children. I am here representing a silent majority of citizens who support medical marijuana. Just a little bit about myself, my middle daughter, who was seven at the time last year, her grandmother was diagnosed with stage IV brain and lung cancer. She caught it right on stage IV. There was nothing to probably do. She ended up passing away last year. So, that was her only grandmother. So my, coming from a seven-year-old, you know, that, I did not know how to, you know, handle that situation. This year, my, my grandmother, on my mother's side, my maternal grandmother, passed away on Easter morning from pancreatic cancer, which is, it was very inhumane toward the end of her time. She actually got buried on April 20th, which is also known as 4/20, which is also known as National Cannabis Holiday, for the constituents in America for over 27 years. The one natural plant that would have made a difference if my grandmother and my daughter's grandmother would have been able to have access to it, considering it was already legalized in 2014. Medical marijuana has been legalized. Oh, I already hit that part, sorry. Now, it has, you know, come to my attention, considering it was, you know, been legalized since 2014, it has given elected officials three years to get prepared to, for the future of their cities. Now, it has come to my attention also, that cities are thinking that if they do not put a implement or, implement a ban or a moratorium, that the city does not have the power to formulate regulations. But you guys do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, leave him go.
Okay.
We'll follow.
This state just laid the foundation, and it has given the cities an opportunity to follow the will of the people. Restricting access to patients' medication of a natural plant that is already legalized is unconstitutional and going against the 71% of over 20 million people in Florida. Now, I don't know if you know how much people that is in Florida, but it's roughly 14 million people. I urge the city of Oviedo to not put a ban or a moratorium, or extend on medical marijuana dispensaries, because I have a part of the Senate Bill 8A that was recently passed, as Mr. Cobb had mentioned, and it states that a municipality may determine by ordinance the criteria for the location of, and other permitting requirements that do not complete with state law or department rule for medical marijuana dispensing treatments. You know, I'm, I'm a single mom. I would never want anybody to go through what my grandparents...
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, but thank you for your time. I hope you guys understand where I'm coming from. It just basically, it, you guys have the power in your hands. Seminole County did not place a ban on medical marijuana dispensaries, so it's all up to the, to you guys, basically, to allow the people compassion, to be compassionate toward the patients, basically. All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next written request I have is from Sean Coons.
Are we going to go by both timers, or just a one, or?
We're going to use that one now.
Lengthy introduction first, I'm joking.
Name and address for the record, go ahead.
Sean Philip Coons, 670 Venture Court, Winter Springs, Florida, 32708.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time, city council, and Mr. Mayor, fellow residents of Seminole County and Oviedo. While I'm a Winter Springs resident, I'm a overwhelming Oviedo consumer. Congratulations to the first responders and the young men and women who were recognized. They went home to go to bed, I'm sure. I'm a local entrepreneur as well. I'm a teacher, I'm a father, I'm a sports coach, a regular guy. I don't drink, I don't smoke, I don't smoke marijuana, I do nothing. I'm pretty boring in that fashion. I stand against the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. I spend a lot of money in Oviedo because there are competitive companies I can't find anywhere else. My other qualifications as a regular Joe, I suffer from ulcerative colitis. Cannabinoids have been shown to be very effective, both in pain relief and in relieving inflammation, when tested with Crohn's patients and ulcerative colitis patients alike. To this end, the federal government owns patents on these cannabinoids. Currently, my medication is given intravenously, you know what that means, at the Cancer Institute, as an infusion of Remicade, which without insurance is billed at $25,000 per dosage. With insurance, it's billed around $16,000 per dosage. It occurs every eight weeks for me. Please don't limit access to alternative or more affordable medicines. I also ask you to consider that the state of Florida has given their government colleges free rein to begin testing industrial hemp. While it's not medicinal, it's the same new booming industry, and a lot of local farms, including Ms. Maya Papaya down the street, friend of mine, are hoping to get in on the test-run shortlist. Don't let Oviedo be left in the dust on this new industry, and in the, or in the medical dispensary field. You already have more invasive and more, you know, we're already arguing more invasive and more expensive infrastructures, you know. Thirdly, and a little bit more broad and more inclusive for everybody, it's neither the city hall's job to determine the metal... the City Hall's job to determine the medical quality of these pharmaceuticals, that's between the patient and the doctor, nor is it City Hall's job to micro-regulate business, that is the job of the provider and the consumer, just like it is between CVS and the consumer and public, uh, pharmacy and the consumer. Put the dispensary issue to a referendum. A few of you are up for reelection this year, the other three are up for reelection next year, put your name next to that. We're not trying to demand a dispensary, we're literally asking you to do nothing. We're not trying to become Asheville or San Francisco, we're not selling joints and dime bags, it's already been legislated down with the low potency pills and suppositories. Uh, medical marijuana, one more states than Hillary Clinton, don't discount that. End the moratorium or put it on the ballot. Uh, in case you missed the other, please, regulation is typically slow-moving, sporadic and unreliable, and let the free market decide. Thank you.
Next written request I have is from Steve Edmonds.
Evening, folks. Steve Edmonds, 1022 Vanessa Drive, Oviedo, 32765.
How are you tonight, Steve? Made it in time.
Made it in time, got done with school and was over here. Thanks, uh, thanks for dragging it to the end of the agenda so that I could be here, I appreciate that greatly.
I did thank you.
I'm, um, I'm usually, uh, the minority voice in these chambers, uh, I have been for a long time since the late 90s. Um, I usually speak, uh, for the trees and for the turtles and for a couple of other common sense things, especially free market things. Um, but tonight, tonight, as you already see, I speak for the majority, 71% of the majority, actually. And, um, it's incumbent on this council to not impede anymore on their wishes or on the free market's wishes. Basically, what you have here, as a couple of other people have already pointed out, is a guideline provided by the state. That's what you all said you were waiting for when you wrote the last moratorium that I disagreed with heavily. Um, so now that you have it, you have no more excuse to wait. Um, by waiting, you put people out. You can't get financing or get a business plan done when there's a city with a moratorium going on, you know that as well as I do. Um, you are limiting people's constitutional rights at this point in time. There are several cities that are going to be facing lawsuits already for the moratoriums that they're putting in place and, and re-engaging in. I do not want my tax dollars spent on fighting something that doesn't need to be fought. And I will say that emphatically, that, um, I've known every one of you for a long, long time, I've worked with every one of you in different cases. Bob and I are fraternity brothers.
I'm sorry.
I, I, yeah.
That's too much information.
I, I promise you.
I meant for Bob.
And that's for Bob. I promise you on public record that if you don't listen to the will of the people, I will make sure that you hear the will of the people in the upcoming elections. So, with that, I hope very respectfully that you will drop this, uh, moratorium, allow government to do what it's done, and get out of the way. Get out of the way. You don't need to be there, the moratorium doesn't need to be there, you're legally covered by the state, and if you don't follow the state and the constitutional directives, you're gonna lose my tax dollars, and you'll certainly lose my vote if you do that. So, thanks very much, guys, hope you have a great night.
Last written request I have is from James Turney. And again, we just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Turney, I'm 668 Cortez Circle in Altamont Springs, and, um, thank you for the chance, Mr. Mayor and Council, to speak to you, and like the other citizens that have approached you this evening, I'm also rising to speak against continuing or extending the moratorium as you're considering. Most people have, have spoken well about this already, um, so I would just want to remind you that, um, that we have a, uh, a legislature that has now considered this will of the people that passed overwhelmingly with a constitutional amendment last November, and we now have a situation where the, the legislature has in effect given you a, a poison pill in the legis, in the law, to try to encourage you to not follow the will of the people and allow for dispensaries. They did that by taking away any additional powers or local prerogative that you have about dispensaries. Uh, so I encourage you not to succumb to that, um, effort to subvert the will of the people. I would like to remind you that there are very few people under the law that has, now it's, that it's enacted, that qualify for this medicine. And, uh, so you don't, there's not some mass movement, smoking is not even allowed, so there's not some, um, you know, social element to this medicine, at least at this point. There are not very many companies that qualify to operate dispensaries, so it's not like there's going to be some mass number of, um, companies coming into Oviedo to set up dispensaries, even if all the other localities around here ban them. It's not like suddenly this will be, you know, Las Vegas, dispensaries on every corner. There's just not enough patients that qualify, there are not enough companies that are qualified. So, we're not talking about some revolutionary event for Oviedo if you allow dispensaries. So, um, consider those, please, when you decide whether you want to cooperate with the legislature in subverting the will of the people, and I believe that it's correct to say that the people of Oviedo passed this constitutional amendment like the people of Seminole did, like the people of Florida did. So I think you should be listening to your constituents. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. That is the end of the written requests that we have, we can move on to council motion and discussion. Let's entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we deny Resolution 3442-17. Well, in that case, could I move that we approve Resolution 3442-17?
I wasn't, I was waiting, I thought he was gonna speak, hold on.
Okay.
You watch your original motion.
To deny.
To deny, so lift the moratorium.
Lift the moratorium.
Second.
Okay, rare motion, we have a second. Councilwoman?
I, I did not like the idea of it going the entire duration of the moratorium in the first place. We did get the information we needed from the state. I, I see no reason to not allow somebody to come in, uh, at, at one point, we were saying, oh, well, we, we wanna find out what the county does, maybe the county will ban it throughout the county. Well, if they do and somebody's come in, that's not our problem, that is a business decision that should be made on the outside. So, I, I'm in favor of just letting, letting the free market take care of itself.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I think the gentleman who just last spoke put it very well, you know, the state wasn't very clear, um, on how they wanted it handled, but I will say that, um, the people were very clear, and I'm just gonna read you some numbers here. I've been saying this for a very long time up here, and sometimes you vote for things that you may not agree with, I'm not saying I don't agree with it, but these are our Oviedo residents, these are 10 precincts in Oviedo for Amendment 2, 72%, 72, 68, 76, 74, 72, 74, 69, 66, and 75. That is the city of Oviedo residents speaking at the ballot box on this issue. And, um, none of us really know where it's gonna go, but, you know, this soul up here, we needed to take a look at this and see where it goes. I don't know where, where Winter Springs is, the county is, what, what have you, and I'm not sure how this is all gonna work, um, but when the people speak, I'm gonna listen to them. And, um, these are my voters here, well into the 70s in this, so, you know, unfortunately, it's a little scary going into it because, you know, I think about my police officers having to, you know, maybe keep an eye on something they didn't have to before, um, we don't know where it's gonna go, but when the people vote and they make a constitutional amendment, I'm not gonna stand in the way of that. And, um, it's a little scary, though, making this yes vote, but you know what, leaders lead, people speak, and like I said, I, it has served me well for a very long time, the masses, when they go to the ballot box, usually get it right, and, uh, they properly got it right here. So, we're gonna see how it is, um, you know, at least from my perspective, there's three others have to weigh in, this is a hard one, this is one of the hardest ones in 12 years to vote on, but in the end, when I go to sleep tonight, I know I did the right thing, you know, and if it helps somebody who's sick, I've, I've done a lot of video watching and a lot of, you know, I'm a very visual person and I've seen what this stuff has done. Now, I will tell you this, if this was like the gentleman just talked about, a pot shop where people can go in like Colorado, I would not support that. You know, they have traffic crashes out the, out the behind up there, and it's crazy, but this, the way I understand it now with, you know, not being able to do it like that recreationally, I think this, you know, might help some folks, but it is a little, it is a little scary going down this road, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep our faith and we're gonna, we're gonna listen to the city residents. It's, it's funny, none of them are at the podium tonight, it's from other people, but they did speak, I haven't.
One was.
And one, and one, oh, I forgot, Mr. Edmonds, Steve was here.
Um, but these numbers I got from the supervisor of elections just this evening, 'cause I wanted to know exactly, I knew how the county voted, how the state, but the city of Oviedo voted overwhelmingly for this, so I think we gotta fly with it.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Councilman Pollak, or Councilman Britton, whoever wants to go.
Go ahead. Um, when did we pass this?
Six months ago.
Six months ago, Brian, what have we done since then?
We've been monitoring the state legislature.
Do we have no policy for us to look at?
We haven't developed anything yet.
Okay.
Well, we can, it's all or nothing.
Mr. Colbert, I hate to put you on the spot, but.
Go ahead.
Um, why don't they have dispensaries for Lipitor? Or, or any other prescription drug?
I don't know that that's a legal question, uh, it's, what you're talking about really is a policy question of what, what you want in the city, so.
Can, is it possible for us to, uh, state a policy that we can allow for medical marijuana to be dispensed from a pharmacy? We've got a ton of those.
I do not believe the legislation, as I understand it, gave blanket approval for pharmacies to dispense medical marijuana. I believe there is a reference in the statute that provides that, uh, if, if cities do not prohibit the location of marijuana dispensaries, then they would be, the dispensaries would be basically subject to the same location regulations as pharmacies within a city. So in other words, if a, if, if a pharmacy could be located in certain areas of the city, and if the city doesn't prohibit marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries, then, uh, to the extent that there is a demand for it, or that people want to do it, they could locate in, in similar fashion throughout the city. That's what I believe that the statute provided for.
Could we require that, uh, medical marijuana be dispensed by a licensed pharmacist?
The city doesn't have the power to do that in, in what the legislature passed.
Okay, guys in the audience? It's, it, guys, it, guys, I'm sorry, it's our discussion now, so, okay?
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, this is a medical, uh, a piece of medicine, I'm just trying to figure out what's so special about it that it can't just be produced and just dispensed like every other medicine we get, like I've gotta go get it in, in 10 minutes.
Well, I, I think a lot of people potentially would agree with that, the legislature is the one that passed the legislation that set the parameters after the, the voters approved the referendum.
I'm not sure it's federally allowed either. I beg your pardon?
I think the issue there, as explained to us by many, is that it's not federally recognized, that, that, that's where this is really all rolling down from. You know, this would be a very simple issue for all of us if it was, and Councilman, I apologize for jumping in, if it was federally recognized, then it, it wouldn't even be an issue, you know, and then we, then we have a state that, uh, you know, threw their hands up, just took an all or nothing, you know, rather than allowing municipalities some flexibility in zoning, which is really all we're talking about here, nobody's talking about banning medical marijuana, but let's face it, I mean, this is, it's not medical. It, it, you call it medical, but you can't use your prescription, you know, if you have health insurance to get it, it's cash business, you're not getting a prescription, you're getting a recommendation from a doctor, and my God, if that's how those folks have to get it, who could use it, well, yeah, I, I'm all for that, but everybody's all for it until the dispensary shows up in their front yard, and then they're down here at City Hall wanting to burn down City Hall, so that's, I hope everybody understands the, now, it's, we can't do any more discussion, we, we can't, no, can't do any more discussion, the pickle that local municipalities got put in. And you're right, you're all aggravated, you're all mad, you, you're, you're, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, but the unfortunate part is that it all rolled downhill, which is why other municipalities have continued moratoriums and things of that nature, but anyway, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed you, we didn't take anything, any kind of proactive action. Sitting down and, and waiting for something to happen for six months is, uh, is unacceptable to me, so.
Actually, cities that took proactive action, when the state did what they did, everything that they did got wiped out. You can't put any limits on them, you can't put.
We haven't had any, uh, anything come before us. Councilwoman Slade, it's been asking for it for how long?
Mr. Cobb, why, why don't you explain that?
Uh, Councilman, the reason we haven't put anything together was because we did not, as the mayor said, we did not wish to be reversed by the state. We didn't want to prepare an ordinance ba, not, without having any type of criteria from the state. Once we got the information, then we started working on it, and basically, the conclusion was, we had two options, we either ban it, or we treat it like a pharmacy. That's our only two options. Now pharmacies are allowed in the OC, the C1 and C2 zoning districts, and that's our two options, we either ban it, or we, and we're only talking about the dispensing facilities, the state legislature took care of all the other parts of the operation that are before that gets to the dispensing facilities, we have no, we're preempted from that altogether. But we only have two options, we either ban it, or we, or we treat it like a pharmacy.
Well, we're talking about, out of both sides of our house, we, we just voted on a moratorium to ban, to consider banning wireless that the state can over, overrule us on, can't they?
Well, we haven't talked about banning the wireless, we were just talking about establishing a permitting process.
But the state can still regulate that.
They can preempt us, they can preempt us on anything.
You, you understand what I mean?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, treat it like a pharmacy and, and let it be done.
Okay. Good. Councilman Pollak?
Chief Tannen, do you have a second? We need to vote quick, if you wanna, let me hear.
Is this legal under the United States Constitution?
Under the United States Constitution, though, the federal government, it's still a Schedule I drug. The, the state statute also requires, the limitations are, you have to treat it like a pharmacy, the only restrictions are, it has to be 500 feet from an elementary school, a middle school, or secondary school. It does not exempt it from less than 500 feet from a preschool, from a park, it's just those three things that the state statute preempts it from being 500 feet from a, an elementary school, a middle school, or a secondary school. And then it, it has to be treated like a pharmacy as far as.
They're automatically saying there's something dangerous about it if they're doing that.
Well, that's, I'm just talking about the statute says.
I, I just don't get it.
It, it, it's still a Schedule I drug under federal government, yes.
Alright. Well, I, I stood up here on, uh, in December and, and made an oath, and in that oath, I, I said, "I do solemnly swear, and I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States." And if it's against. And if it's against the Constitution of the United States, how can I uphold this oath? How can any of us?" We've all taken that oath.
Ask Mr. Colbert. Will the federal agents come and arrest us? Mr. Colbert?
It's not unconstitutional.
Let's have just one discussion at a time. I'm sorry, Bob.
But, so, I mean, that's, that's my issue, is it needs to be taken care of on federal level, not on a state level. I understand the voters and how they voted in the state of Florida, but it makes the police department's job a lot more difficult. There's been instances where, you know, they, they will confiscate them, and then now they've gotta give them back after, you know, for something, and that can potentially put the police officers in a bad position as well, because they've, they've taken an oath as well. So, I just have a, it just, there's something about this that just doesn't seem right.
All righty. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Colbert, or Dr. Korea, whoever wants to answer this. It was brought up that we can set zonings, but I think we've pretty well established that the way the state has set up the rule, you just treat it like a pharmacy, correct? I mean, we can't make, we can't say it's gotta be 2,500 feet from a school or a park because the state has said otherwise. Am I correct, Mr. Colbert?
That's correct.
Right, so... Other cities in Seminole County, I know Seminole still has a moratorium, Sanford has a moratorium, Winter Springs has a moratorium, Castleberry has a moratorium, I don't know what Lake Mary has, Altemon, I think, still has a moratorium, Longwood does not. I think I'm correct on that. So, you know, the problem with this is that it's needed, but, you know, OC zoning, guys, when you hear that a pharmacy can go in, that's office commercial. That means, you know, they could show up in small, little neighborhood strip centers, and this isn't fear mongering, I'm just pointing out to everybody what can happen. You know, and then it becomes recreational at some point in time, and then things change. And yes, I know we can make the argument, as Mr. Edmonds has with me, you know, you have liquor stores and things like that, but, you know, it's 70 years in the making. That's, that's the struggle that we have up here, because the first one that shows up where somebody doesn't like it, who do you think they're calling? They're calling us. And the same thing will happen, they'll come up there and they'll stand at the podium, and they'll say, "I'm not gonna support you in the next election." You know, it's, it's a repetitive cycle. I think that, you know, yes, a majority of folks voted for it, but I think a majority of folks, when they see medical, you know, assume that you're gonna be able to take your Blue Cross Blue Shield and go to your doctor and get a prescription and go buy it at Walgreens. I don't know if everybody fully understood that this is a cash business, which just complicates the issue even more. Mr. Cobb, would we allow pharmacies? Can we tweak that just a little bit? I mean, so we can get these in commercial areas and keep the pharmacies in commercial areas? And, I mean, we have every darn pharmacy we need in the city of Oviedo. We don't need pharmacies, we need medical marijuana facilities. So, how do we work within the state and yet have them over by the hospital? The new cancer center that's over there would be perfect for them over there. How do we make that happen? Within the parameters of the law?
Well, within the parameters of the law, and I may need Mr. Colbert's assistance, but you can't separate them. You cannot establish special regulations just for the dispensaries and not do the same for the...
I understand, but could we do it for pharmacies? And then it's set for pharmacies?
One of the brainstorms that we were talking about today was, if you recall, a number of years ago, we established special regulations for convenience stores. Where we established, even though they were allowed in certain zoning districts, we established that they were only allowed at certain intersections. And then we said that you couldn't have more than two at an intersection, and they had to be a certain distance apart from each other. And if they were adjacent to residential, then there were special regulations that they had to do. We could look at, looking at pharmacies in that way. Obviously, we have a concern about creating nonconforming situations. We could, we can try, try to look at different intersections within the city that we would say would be appropriate. And here that, I think if you had to do anything, I would say, remove it from the OC zoning district, just because we have OC zoning district immediately adjacent to residential. Whereas your C1s and your C2s are mostly at your commercial intersection. Some C1s are adjacent to residential places, but for the most part, your C1s and C2s are in your commercial districts.
Yeah, they're gonna be on the major thoroughfares.
Yes, sir. So, I think there's things that we could do regarding pharmacies.
So, how do you get us there without us having to extend this moratorium?
Well, right now, one of the things, this resolution only extends the moratorium. If you deny the resolution, all it means is that your moratorium is, will expire on August the 5th. This resolution, denying this resolution, doesn't halt the moratorium, that would take an ordinance to repeal it. So, right now, if you pass the motion, then, then the moratorium would not be...
All right, so you have two weeks. Can it be fixed in two weeks?
You can't adopt the Land Development Code in two weeks, no. Because it would be an amendment to your Land Development Code, so that would require...
But could we start it in two weeks? So, at least it's in motion and in progress.
Your next meeting is August 7th, so the moratorium...
Well, we'd have to have a special meeting, I understand that. I don't want these folks to leave with a ban on a moratorium or an extension on a moratorium. I want them to leave with, the city of Oviedo is going to allow these, but I also don't want my phone ringing off the hook when one opens up in the Riverside Plaza next to Barton, like a gun store did, which was perfectly legal. And those of you who are up here on council, remember all those phone calls and emails we received over that. So, how do you get us there?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question that relates to this. The office commercial, do we require a special exception to put a pharmacy in office commercial as it is, or is that not, I didn't see that in the materials? If it requires a special exception...
That's a great question.
Then that would be a check in and of itself.
Don't have to grant it, do we?
No. But that's a valid point, though.
That's a good point.
To try to not have it adjacent to residential, but still, you know, see, there's lots of C1 and C2 still available.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I have one other question. Mr. Colbert, can you help me out with this one? I think you might be best suited for this. If it ever came that, you know, there was a movement in the state to get recreational marijuana, like they have in Colorado, that would have to be another voter-approved constitutional amendment. That would be different? Like, these shops that they would set up with the medical stuff, couldn't just one day say, "We're gonna have a recreational product" under the statute that they have, correct?
It would, it would take a change in the law, whether it was a constitutional amendment or a legislative enactment by the state legislature. It would take that, one of those, or a combination of those, to move from where we are today to the recreational use of marijuana.
Right. So, you would, you would need a legislature to get involved in that. So, what we would have with these shops, wherever they would be, would be the, you know, the liquid form, and I think Chief was telling me, maybe even an edible form.
I think they could vape it, too.
Something like that. But the, but the usual, what they have in Colorado is not gonna be allowed.
In its current form.
Yeah, in its current form. That's good, okay, cool.
Anybody have, from staff, have an answer to, Dr. Korea, can you? That was a great point that Councilwoman brought up.
Drugstores are permissible uses in OC, not special exception use.
Okay.
All righty, so, if I may, or, so, let's go along the track that I was on, I mean, the rest of the council hasn't weighed in on this yet, but let's just assume that, you know, the OC is the problem, or the challenge.
Mm-hmm.
The challenge. So, tonight, we let this die. We have until the 7th. Can we get something together that makes it a special exception needed in OC? And do we get together at fall before?
There's a special meeting next, next Monday.
We have a, we have a meeting on the 24th.
Yeah.
We could just bring that up, bring it to us, and...
We could present us...
Then it's zoning in progress.
In a work session, and then it would have to be declared zoning in progress.
I would think everybody would leave happy. Is that a possibility, Mr. Cobb?
As far as putting together an ordinance that you can have read into the record?
I'm sorry?
As far as putting together an ordinance that you can read into the record?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
The 24th, first reading, kind of what Mr. Groot did with the, what were those things? The wireless stuff.
Right.
Just so you can claim zoning in progress, and then, you know, C1, C2, they're allowed, commercial areas, OC. Somebody comes in and says, you know, "I wanna put one in Riverside Plaza," or whatever small, little office commercial there is here and there, which is next to neighborhoods. I guess there's another one probably up by Artesia, right?
That one's actually C1.
That's actually C1, huh?
Yes, sir.
Wow. But you get my point?
Mm-hmm.
That we can possibly do that and have a first reading of that at our special meeting on the 24th. Zoning in progress, and, you know, whatever steps we have to go through to clarify it, we can get it all done right. I mean, it might have to be tweaked here and there. If you throw something together, we always find something in it. What do you think?
Let's do it.
And as long as we let Dr. Korea do, we don't Brianize it, it'll be great.
Could we treat the same way as we treated the architectural standards?
Everybody else doesn't understand that. Staff understands it, though.
Could we treat it as a work session? We present the idea, and then the resolution...
The 24th is a special meeting, so we can, we can do something there. Are you, is the direction to make it a special exception requirement, or to make it not permissible in OC?
Well, I haven't gotten that far yet. This is just Dominic talking out to council, so I just wanted to know what we could or could not do, and then I will go back to the council.
I think we could possibly put together a, at least an ordinance title that would amend the permissible uses table, depending on how you make, whatever, to accomplish whatever direction regarding the OC district.
Okay, that's fine. And then we can have a further discussion as you start to write it, and then we can finalize it. It takes two or three hearings, or whatever it takes.
It's three hearings. And, yes, I think that's, that's doable. I would ask that we be able to provide it to you at the meeting, much like Mr. Groot did on the 19th.
All right. Well, let me go up and down the dais, since I've taken, well, I think we all had a bite at the apple, but let me go back and forth one more time. Thank you, Dr. Korea. I'll start from the left, Councilman Britton.
That sounds good.
Deputy Mayor?
So, you're gonna make an ordinance, start it in progress, that these will be allowed only in C1, C2 areas, zoning in progress, and they won't be all over, but they'll be available, and everybody's happy, and we took care of it.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, I see heads shaking. Good.
Councilwoman?
Now, just to, just to make sure on the timing, at the junior, at the July 24th meeting, that is going to be, this isn't like a new moratorium, zoning in progress is a different legal situation, that's just putting people on notice that if they apply in the OC zoning, then they will probably not ultimately be successful. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And can we go ahead and set tonight the timing of all of this, so we don't have anything get pushed, or we say, "Oh, we have a full agenda, we're gonna make it go later"? Let's boom, boom, boom this out. Because that's not hard, all we're gonna do is amend the zoning table. Is it as simple as it sounds like it is to me? It's not? Okay. Could you explain to us why it's not simple, please?
Well, it's, we...
We're gonna hurry up the conversation a little bit, because Councilman Britton has to exit in a moment, so. I'd like to let him vote on this.
I don't wanna leave without voting on this.
All right, it's there.
So, we would have to check all the zonies, we have to check with the chief, too, but also we have to advertise, right?
Is 90 days enough time?
Oh, yeah.
To help the council?
Yeah, I just wanna know that it's gonna happen quickly, and...
The time, the difficulty of the timing, this Korea just, Dr. Korea just hit it perfectly. It's the required advertising of the public hearings, okay? And so, we have to do a land planning agency public hearing first, and then we have to do two public hearings before state council. So, like with the wireless, the land planning agency public hearing is the 25th, okay? We were lucky to not, we wedged them in with this. So, what you would be looking at, the possibility is that LPA, we get the LPA done in August, and then we knock this out in September.
Could you bring a calendar back for us on the 24th, that we could review?
Yes, and Mr. Cobb, what I was trying to raise with the architectural standards, that with the architectural standards, we presented to council, council decided to declare those as zoning progress, and we brought as a resolution. And then we had some time, so these were already in effect, and then we had some time to prepare the ordinance. So, that's why we could do that way, too.
Just bring calendar.
Okay.
So that way, Councilwoman can...
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you. And also, just wanted to make sure, for everybody that's out here who's read the Constitution, there is nothing unconstitutional about any drug recreational or otherwise, that is not a constitutional issue, that is a federal law issue, which is a completely separate thing from the Constitution. So, you've got the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Florida, they kinda go like this. And then you've got federal laws, which are underneath both of the constitutions, as I understand the legal system, to work. So, you can sleep, you can sleep easy tonight, it's gonna be okay.
All right, let me... All right, so, it's been so long. The motion on table is to deny the resolution, is what I heard. Councilman Pollak, do you have anything left that you'd like to add, so I can call the votes, or Councilman Britton can go get his?
Call the vote.
All right. Yeah, 'cause he has to go to the street corner and get his drugs. Oh, wait. I couldn't resist. All right.
I've got a 5 o'clock plane, I gotta catch, and I need this...
There is a motion on table to deny resolution 3442-17. We've had discussion with staff on what the next steps will be at our July 24, 2017, 6:00 PM special session. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. There you go, guys. All right, now you can applaud, and you don't have to stay around, everybody can exit. I'm gonna take a two-minute break, and then we'll reconvene and finish up. break, and then we'll reconvene and finish up.
...
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time's the applicant present?
Evening. Tom Skelton, American Civil Engineering Company, 207 North Moss Road, Suite 211, Winter Springs. I'm here with the applicants, Liz and Greg Gamage. We agree with the conditions of approval and are here to answer any questions you might have.
Great, terrific. Nice to see some of this residential professional being used along King Street, so. Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
No? Very good. I have no request to speak forms on this item, so I'll move on to council motion. Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor, be sure.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 3446-17.
Second.
There you go, Bobby. Got the second. We have motion to second. Deputy Mayor, anything?
No, they're upgrading that property. It looks nice. Good luck on your business and all.
Get out. Get out. Councilmember?
I am so excited that historic structure is being used for commercial purposes. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this, for choosing of your own free will to invest in a historic home. And I don't know if you guys, my colleagues up here, looked at some of the deviations needed, but we had spoken earlier about the need to readdress some of the standards for commercial, you know, converting from residential to commercial. And I hope you took note of that and that we can maybe expedite this on the staff side after we do the medical marijuana pharmacy thing with OC. I'd say, make this next up.
Dr. Korea, I believe you're working on some of those items, correct? All righty. Wasn't this the old parsonage for the church?
Spencer House. I watched it be moved.
Moved, yeah.
They pulled up the, yeah, they pulled up all the power lines, moved it over, and plopped it in place. So, it can't easily be moved. So, these deviations truly are, you're just trying to work within the historic, well, the second historic place that this has been. But thank you again for keeping it standing.
Oh. Great design. What type of businesses, I didn't even ask?
It's a public accounting fee firm.
Can? Great.
It's citizen tax compliant.
Great. Well, evidently, Councilman Britton likes to pay in cash. Oh, no, I'm only kidding. But, hey, welcome. Great job. And, you know, let's take a vote and see where it all goes.
Ooh, I could add one request. In talking with staff, it sounds like you're not locked into different kinds of, to certain kinds of trees with your plans. If you have a chance to do edible, I think that your kids, who have been incredibly patient tonight, might get a kick out of that. And I know all the people walking by would probably find that interesting, too. So, just for your consideration, if it works out.
Yeah, plant the coconut tree now.
Hello, fire.
All right. Can I take, call the vote now? You're sure? You're good?
I'm good.
All right. Anything else up and down? Nope. Motion on table is to adopt all those. In favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Go CPA, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, sorry, you were all the way-
They were amazing tonight. They really were.
Had I realized, and I do apologize, I would have pulled that up to the front.
I know, it's interesting.
Okay. If there's ever a next time, just let me know, and we'll swap it around a little.
As a Nobita native for 47 years, I'd like to thank all of you in the council, in the mayor, and the manager, and the chairman. Thank you, citizens.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving along. Let's see what we're up to. Acquisition of the Chiliota Utility System. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn it over to you for a introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide direction on whether or not we should proceed with the acquisition of the Chiliota system. At your January 4, 2016, meeting, council adopted Resolution 3132-16, and that authorized the city attorney to engage Mr. Bill Sunstrom and his firm to assist in the evaluation and potential acquisition of the Chiliota's utility system. The intent, as we have stated long, long ago, many times, is that the city is in a position to provide a better quality of water to the utility customers, and most likely at a lower rate. Mr. Sunstrom and his associates have conducted an exhaustive forensic investigation of the system. They've met with the system owners, the Florida Governmental Unit Utility Authority. They have also met with the company that is the staff for the FGA. They've met with, one of the unique things about it is that Seminole County is the sponsor of the utility system. Therefore, they have the purchase rights. And so, in order for the city to purchase the system, Seminole County would have to delegate those rights to the city. The, Mr. Sunstrom and his associates have also met with the county commissioners. District Commissioner Delary has stated that he could support the purchase if there were four conditions that were met. One is that the city would not sell capacity to Orange County, that the city would not agree to charge, would agree to not charge the customers in excess of the 25% surcharge. The city could charge up to 50%, but he asked that we would limit it to 25% surcharge. The city would not, would agree to not expand the city limits toward Chiliota. And then, the fourth condition was that the city would agree that it would acquire the system, but not acquire the consumptive use permit, that they would turn the consumption use permit over to the county. Staffs, we're fine with the first three conditions. We, but we have concerns about the fourth condition. Our investigations have shown that we need the additional capacity of the consumptive use permit to sit on top, excuse me, to sit on top of the city's consumptive use permit for us to be able to serve the Chiliota system, as well as to continue to serve the city system. Mr. Colbert and Mr. Groot had a meeting with Commissioner Delary on April the 27th. A memorandum was included in your packet that summarized their meeting. What I would like to do is turn it over to Mr. Colbert and let him tell you about their meeting with Mr. Delary. I also have Mr. Sunstrom and Mr. Robert Brannon, who are here tonight. They're available to ask any, to address any questions you may have. We also have Mr. Terry Zaki, who is one of our consultants and has vast knowledge on not only the city's utility system, but also the Chiliota utility system.
He designed it, for God's sake.
And so, he can also address any questions that you may have. But I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Colbert. Our request tonight is that we would like direction, after you've heard this information and heard this update, on whether or not you want us to proceed and/or if you want us to stop. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Colbert, and I'll let him brief you on their meeting.
Thank you, Brian. We did, Lonnie and I met with Mr. Delary. It was a, it was a good meeting. It lasted probably an hour and a half. We had what we both, Lonnie and I, thought was a good and frank discussion with Mr. Delary. Lonnie's memo that's part of your packet does pretty well reflect that meeting. I want to, to say to you that, that Lonnie and I, after the meeting, we both left that meeting with the feeling that Commissioner Delary is very firm in his position, that he understands the city's position, that he, as a county commissioner, feels an obligation to look out for the county, and that, from his perspective, that, that it would not be in the overall best interest of the county. And I'm trying to give you what I believe his feeling was, that it was not in the overall best interest of the county to, to, if it had an opportunity in the future to, to acquire the utility and have the CUP, or if the city acquired the facility and the county was able to reserve the CUP, that it was not in the county's long-term interest to let that go. And as we discussed it, I, I approached it from several different directions, and there was no change in his position. And Mr. Groot and I left feeling that, that there would not likely be a change. What that means, I think, from a legal perspective, is that unless the city decides that it wants to continue to pursue this with the county over the objection of the district county commissioner, that, and we don't recommend that, I think the likelihood of the county going against the district county commissioner's recommendation is not, not great. But unless you choose to do that, then I think you should have a discussion and decide either tonight or later, and most likely later, because it is a big decision, to discuss whether you want to, to potentially try to have discussions from a, from a city council, county commission decision with some type of joint meeting. But I think as far as, as our ability to, to move Commissioner Delary to a point of view more favorable to the cities, I don't think that's likely to occur. My sense was that, that he felt that the long-term interest of the county was to have that CUP, and if, if the city bought it under the terms that he talked about, he would be satisfied with that. Otherwise, he would be satisfied to wait to a future date and for the county to potentially explore that. Mr. Sunstrom is here. He has served ably as the city's special counsel. He has done a lot of analysis, both financial and practical feasibility. And he's here to answer your questions, or perhaps there's something that he might like to add. But that is our report to you. We, we basically place it back in the hands of the council for discussion and direction of where you want to go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Let me open up the discussion. Who would like to go first?
I've got some questions.
Sure, Britton.
Have we asked Commissioner Delary what he would think about us keeping the portion of the CUP that is required to meet Chiliota's current needs? That sounds like it's been rather steady, from what Mr. Wyatt had said. And then giving the county the remainder? If they're pulling out, if their CUP is 2.88 million gallons per day, that's like five times more than is actually required to meet their needs. Am I crunching the numbers right? For anybody else who's attempting to crunch numbers. But if that line of reasoning makes sense, and if we did in 2016 exceed our CUP from what we're, for what we're pulling for, from our current wells to serve people currently in this system, it sounds like we may need that. I guess the follow-up question is, did we, after we investigated why we exceeded that, did we find some problems and were we able to correct it? did we find some problems and were we able to correct it to the, to the point where we could pull another 540 out of our system? So, I guess that is a question for probably Mr. Wyatt, maybe.
I don't know if that's a question they can answer tonight, but, well, it's, Mr. Cobb is writing it, so let him catch up with us.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think we just need a lot more information, and then to maybe ask Commissioner DeLaurie if he would be supportive of something where we just take only what we need to, to show good faith that there's no intention of expanding the consumer base out there, and if, if new people need, there, there needs to be some kind of arrangement where if the county approves in county, the county's jurisdiction additional development, they give us the, the ability to serve those people, if that's where the pipes, if the pipes come from, from us, we need to be able to expand enough to serve the people that they allow to build within that jurisdiction, if that makes sense.
It, it does all make sense, but...
But he's not being sensible or something? I mean, it sounds like, like, I don't know that it's ever been presented to him as that. So, maybe we could go back and try that. Because that, to me, like, that's a math-based way just to come up with a fair allocation of that, of that CUP.
Bobby, can it be split up like that? Or Terry, or?
I, I wasn't aware that you could even split the CUP from the utility.
Terry, can you answer that question for?
Yeah, because doesn't the utility go with the CUP? Or you can, you can, like, sell them off? Okay, they go together.
CUP, yeah, it's not portable.
Okay, so it lives with the utility?
Yeah, like Oviedo, it lives here.
Okay.
Goes nowhere else. You can't split it up.
So, what Commissioner DeLaurie wants is not legally possible at this point?
From my understanding.
Okay. I thought it was weird to try to split them, but if, if we can, and we don't need it all...
I would say, I would not speak to the legal aspects of it, but it would not be in keeping with the rules of the St. John's River Water Management District. Consumptive use permits are issued on the basis of the demand in the area and the wellfield withdrawal capability of that area. So, it's not something I can pick up from Chiliota and use over in Orange County. It's not something I can pick up and take elsewhere, unless I'm interconnected with another system. If I'm interconnected with another system and I have those pipelines, yes, then that water does move around. But still, with only in, then what they would do is they'd say, okay, you have to write a CUP that encompasses all of that. So, you end up with one CUP for the whole area.
So, we would end up with our current one plus 2.88, which they may adjust up or down?
That is correct. They may adjust it down in today's environment. They may look at it and say, okay, you want to transfer this because you bought it, but we want to take a look at this to make sure that the numbers that were previously put forth to us and justified the original CUP, if they're still valid today. And in the actual CUP, it talks about transferring the permit in the, in the event that the permitted facility is sold, they have 30 days to transfer ownership and control of the real property and the CUP. So, they have to file a letter, once they get purchased by anybody, they have to file a letter with the St. John's.
So, that's considered a, is that considered a real estate, like, that's a property right, then? The CUP is, it's an interest in real property?
I, I wouldn't, I don't know the law well enough to know that that's a property right, but it does run with the facility.
I know somebody does know the law well enough, probably.
Yeah.
I could, I could defer.
Terry, why don't you answer any other technical question?
Yeah, I'm very curious about whether it can be separated.
Generally, generally, it could not be separated that way.
Okay, so the tradition is it doesn't separate?
Okay, now, Megan, meet Mr. Bill Sunstrom.
Oh, I'm excited about this one.
He can answer all these questions. Now, for, for, just, Bill, let me just make an introduction here for the new members who don't know who Mr. Sunstrom is. Mr. Sunstrom was key in us being able to acquire Alafeja Utilities, the wastewater plant, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record. Bill Sunstrom, 2544 Blairstone Pines Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. We've had the honor to represent the city on occasion when you've called us in in the past for special purposes, for utility purposes. The problem with the permit is, and let me, let me address the first question. The state doesn't have to give you a driver's license, but once it gives you a driver's license, that becomes a property right, and you can't take it away but with due process of law. I would argue that the same is basically true with a consumptive use permit, although the state certainly has every ability to regulate the use of that permit, just like the state can take your driver's license away for too many violations or whatever else. Terry is right. The consumptive use permit is assigned to that specific population in that specific place. On further examination and close reading of the permit, it's also limited to 540,000 gallons on an annual, on an average daily basis, which is what they need. So, there really isn't any water to split, contrary to earlier thinking. The, that water is needed for those people in that place, and if the county were to acquire that utility, they would need that cup to service those customers. We've not gone to the Water Management District to say, is this possible? I don't think it is. I agree with, with your public works director and, and outside engineer. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of confused about some of the numbers that we're, we're sitting around by email, but if, maybe I need to revisit the math. So, if, if we really are limited to the 540, and that's all that is under the permit, it's, the permit's got to come. So, if the county wants it, they're, they're going to have to take it, or let them stay how they are, I guess.
Bob, anything?
I'm, I'm just trying to get my arms around, you know, what, what's, what's in it for, for Oviedo in the, in this deal? The, the, if, the, the, the use permit, the consumptive use permit is all Chiliota have, or, it's just for the Chiliota, so there's no excess? And, you know, basically, we're just taking over the utility and we're capped on the surcharge. I, I'm not seeing much of a, of an upside, and maybe I'm missing it. I'm, I'm trying to understand it.
Well, the entire exercise that we went through was to determine whether it would be a prudent move for the city to pursue this at all, whether it could be acquired at a price that the city could digest, and what would be the benefits to the city of doing this, and what would be the benefits to the customers in doing this, and why would the county want to assign its purchase rights? And if I can address that in a very summary form, in, in any particular order, is this. Working backwards, the county would want to assign its purchase rights, we believe, because the county has no utilities in the area, anywhere. And their former special utility employee, John Cirillo, advised former city manager, county manager Cindy Coto, in a memorandum several years ago, that the county could not economically serve that customer base, and that the only logical operator of that system would be the city. As to what's in it for the customers out there, there would be an immediate rate reduction. The city could operate that utility as part of the economies of scale from the own city system, even after applying the 25% rate, which would still amount to about a 20% rate reduction for those customers out there. The city would be interested in that acquisition for a series of reasons. One is it'd add about 10% to your customer base, or somewhere in there, so you'd get some economies of scale. Two, there's a half a million gallon wastewater plant sitting there, 400,000, I forgot which, Terry. Yeah, there's a, there's a wastewater plant sitting there with a whole bunch of unused capacity in it. And that unused capacity has value. The city could move existing flow off Alafeja to that plant, get maximum utilization of the, out of that plant. That would free up capacity in Alafeja, which you could, then, would free up additional wastewater capacity for the city, for the future growth of the city. Additionally, as that wastewater is treated, it would generate reuse water, which could be come back to the city and which could be used for irrigation purposes. Additionally, there's about a half a million dollars in the reserve fund that would come with the deal. So, there's a, there's a bunch of synergies there that do apply to the city. On the bigger question, I heard what Mr. Colbert said, and I agree with him. This is something you don't have to deal with right now. And I know there are things that happen with the city and the county together that, at some point in time, you might want to, you know, visit this. I, I think that I've made it real clear that I agree that that cup need, you know, that cup does the county no good if the county were to acquire it, because they, they would need the same cup you do, water use permit. So, in the, in the big pull, this is a planning exercise. In the big pull, it's a good thing to do. In the big pull, our exercise has demonstrated that we could acquire the system and it would digest itself from its own rates. In other words, you wouldn't be reaching into your pocket to pay for this thing. It would, it would amort, it would amortize its own indebtedness. There's a lot of reasons to do this, but we are at a point where I agree with Mr. Colbert, the commissioner from the district has put his foot down pretty hard on this one. And in the grander scheme of the relationship between the city and the county, perhaps that could be revisited. I think that's, answers your questions.
You, you talked about the synergies and the economies of scale. Do we have the infrastructure in place to, to, to move the wastewater, as well as bringing back the, the reclaim? Do, do we have those, or is that additional?
We're getting the reclaim already.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
You already have an agreement in place with the former owner before FGUA bought it, to take upwards to, I think, 100,000 of reclaim, so that connection is there. Sewer lines would have to be put in, but we've got sewer connections that run up to their boundary. We would then have to switch them from one system to the other, but they're not insignificant or insurmountable infrastructure that would be needed for that.
And I wasn't kidding. He designed that utility years ago. Well, he knows where all the pipes are.
One last question. Is there a possibility that, and I know we were talking about the, the consumptive use permit, if we were to cap that well and open up another well in, in our city and pipe in water, could we move that consumptive use permit, or is it by the well?
That, that has not been discussed with St. John's. It was purely looking, the discussions that I've had with them has been purely looking at picking up their consumptive use permit and their wells. But it's not been discussed where we would abandon their wells and then ask for a change in your CUP to integrate it into yours. But you're in the same, shall we say, the same straw? You know, you're, you're pulling out of the same basic area. And that's really where a lot of this comes from, is, it's not, it's hydrogeology. How much water can you pull out of any one area within the state of Florida? And that's all been looked at and modeled.
Is, what, I'm sorry.
My only point I was going to make for you is that I believe we were going to close down their water treatment facility and treat all the water here in Tallahassee.
We, yes, we did talk about that as a possibility, yes.
I'm sorry.
And the, is the, the daily draw, the, the, the daily draw from there, is that a physical limitation, or is that a limitation by the CUP? The 584,000?
The 500 is, is kind of the cap, like you have a 4.68 cap on Oviedo's CUP. It's a, it's a cap that you're not to exceed.
If I could, I think he's saying, is it because the well can't suck up anymore? Or is it because that's just the way they buy it?
It's a whole, it's a whole group of things. Partly that, in this area, we have a situation that could, would be called upconing, because under the underlying aquifer, the Florida aquifer over here, we have what's called a relic seawater layer. And if you pull too hard on it, you'll pull that saline-type water up. It's not saltwater, but it's saline. It's a little higher in TDS, or what we call it. So, there is that limitation. But it's also based on historical data of how much people use in the area. So, their average consumption compared to the state's average consumption is factored into any CUP that's issued, trying to get everybody across the state of Florida a fair shake with the St. John's allocation of water.
All right, I'll leave it at that.
Do you want to know, you jump in?
No, 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 you can know.
The consumptive use permit that the city has, I know we got one of the longest ones, it was 20 some odd years, Terry. How long is their consumptive use permit out at that facility? And then, at, whenever it would run out, would they relook at any new developments that are going on, new owners, what, what have you? Do we know how long that is, is granted for?
I have it right here. Oh, permit expires in 2032.
Oh, 2032.
It was issued in 2013.
So, it's got 15 years.
15 more years left to go.
Yeah.
You know, and I think, I think when we had our meeting, Billy, you were there, I think my, my, my one concern is all the synergies and everything that you, you talked about are important. My, my thing for, for Chiliota was always because so many of our kids went to, went to Walker, and a lot of people from Oviedo live out there, moved out there, and their water was really not so good for a very long time, and there was a lot of issues with it's expensive. So, I always said, you know, if we could sell them some water, that would be good, because contrary to what people think, some people think, some people think that we want to acquire Chiliota, and it's never been, for any council I've ever sat on, none of us have ever talked about it, never wanted it, whatever. But I think the concern was for me, you know, the sewer, you know, I don't get excited about sewer, but I would be excited about selling them water, you know, clean water from our plant. But not having that consumptive use permit and taking it from our permit to do that is a problem, you know? So, I mean, I think I, you know, I have to agree, and I said this to Bill when we met, I mean, we'll just see how it goes. It's not a burning desire for me. It's, you know, we have this beautiful plant, you know, I, I kind of see where Councilman Pollock was going with it. You know, do we also know, do we know what the price is? You know, where we can go? There's been prices all over the place, you know? How do we finance that? We're financing police stations doing this, and you have to see. I, it, you know, for me, I'm not sure that it's the time, you know? But I want to hear the mayor weigh in, because he lives and breathes this stuff, and I want to, I want to be swayed, I guess. I don't know if that works, but I'm not, you know, I want to, I would love to just give them the, the pipe, fill those pipes with Oviedo's good water, make some money on it, the sewer, and I really don't care. But I can't do that without that consumptive use permit. That's the problem. If you told me I get that permit and we can connect behind sanctuary, I'm good, go for it. That's a great thing, but we still got to put in some sewer pipes. All right, you, you do this.
I, I've been...
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I could add a, a number that might help us. At 88.4%, if we were to say that the people in Chiliota continue to use that 540 gallons per day, and we want to take it out of our CUP, what would it take for everyone, oh, I guess that, it wouldn't be everyone here. If, yeah, if they keep using it, somehow or another, come up with 88%. So, if everybody here can reduce their water usage by 12%, which is actually pretty, pretty in, a pretty interesting idea. Maybe that's what Commissioner DeLaurie is trying to squeeze us towards.
All right, just sit back. He loves to pile up his, his...
Okay, but 88% we could do.
I'll be brief, actually. Yeah, all right.
You need to be advised that the city already has done that, that your constituents have conserved water, and we've taken consumption from the levels of like 140 down to less than 120 per capita. We've already cut, you know, 10, 12% over time because of the reclaimed water. So, just throwing that out there, and over time, we were, I think we're projecting that eventually the city would be down to less than 104 gallons per capita per day.
We just need to start a campaign that it's okay not to wash our clothes every time you wear them, and save some water.
All right, I, I'll, I'll be brief, so. I'll try to be brief. You know, but Deputy Mayor is right. I mean, I've been vested in this since the first time we had an inkling about it when we were wrapping up the Utilities Inc. deal, Aqua Utilities. Which one was this? Utilities Inc. And, you know, Mr. Sunstrom brought it up, and Mr. Cobb brought it up, and we had that report from the county that said, hey, we should take it over, and it all stems back to Mary Lou was still mayor, actually. And that's how far back this, this... And that's how far back this discussion has been happening when the utility out there had all of the problems with the water, the quality of the water. And that's when all of this started to occur. And, you know, one of her ideas was, yes, we would just run a pipe and give them water, but we can't just do that. I mean, that doesn't work for us. Synergy to get to Bob's point becomes, as Mr. Sundstrom said, it really becomes a financial advantage to us because of the fact that we get to sell them the water. We sell them water at a slight up charge. They save money. They get water out of our plant, not out of the process plant that's out there because the plant that's out there, they've gotten the levels, I think, within reason now, but they still run into issues every now and again. It's the sewer plant because that would enable us to turn around, if I remember right, it's Livock and Sanctuary, right, Bobby? And Riverside? And process them in the sewer plant, which is actually closer to them probably, free up that capacity at our plant, which would enable us to turn around some of the pipes that are still going to Iron Bridge. So, you got to follow where the sewer flows. You know, we still have a lot of sewage going to Iron Bridge that we're making a dime per 1,000 gallons on instead of making $3.30 per 1,000 gallons on at our plant. So, that was the whole impetus of why we even pursued this. The Chiliota system does have some pipe issues in the ground, and I know Mr. Sundstrom and Ms. Terry have been working on evaluating costs into the pro forma. Years of work have been put into this, but, you know, the political climate right now, I just don't see us getting over that hurdle. I mean, if the new members want to take up the charge, you know, and have discussions with the county, I mean, I wouldn't stop you. But I think to continue with Mr. Sundstrom and his group at this time for this purchase, it just might be better if we just back off a little bit, let it lie. Let's see what happens over the next couple of years. You know, there might be a change in the county commission. Maybe they'll realize, as the deputy mayor said, I mean, it has nothing to do with annexation with us. We were the only city that supported the Royal Charter Amendment. This is strictly a financial deal for us and a benefit for the county residents who are currently serviced by this utility. I mean, they would just get better service. But, you know, again, it's not our call. They're not our clients. And, you know, I think personally, I like what Mr. Colbert said. I just think it's time to back off a little bit and, you know, see where this all goes. That's just my opinion.
And why can't we just give them clean water? What's the reason? I know they have.
We don't have enough. We don't have enough to share.
Yeah. We don't have the CUP. If we don't own the system and we're pumping water into it, what happens when a pipe breaks? Who takes care of it?
Yeah.
We have to own it.
Right. So, we're just going to hang out and wait, see what happens.
It's very rare for me to think that waiting is a good idea, but here seems appropriate.
Having a good night tonight. Really good, really good night.
Mr. Colbert, do you have anything to add? Do you think that's a wise decision?
I don't have anything to add. I mean, if that's the decision of the city council, then that helps Mr. Sundstrom and Mr. Cobb and I know what to do.
Guys and gal, what do you think?
Well, it's just not, you know what it is? Like, you know, Utilities Inc. was a whole different story. That was a must, and now we have like this state-of-the-art plant. Terry, would you not agree? I mean, we've done so much work.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just remember, we're getting at capacity there. That's what this acquisition was all about because we're going to make a decision sooner or later to spend, you know, lots of money expanding that plant or less money buying that one. That's what it was boiling down to.
Right. I'm just saying, that one was more of a burning desire because Utilities Inc. people were not taking care of it and we've taken care of it and did everything. So, I agree. I mean, let's just wait. The county, you know, they may have a change. I've talked to Commissioner Delary multiple times on this, and his thing is, you know, sooner or later, one of us will take care of that plant. I mean, he's told me that, you know, and he agrees, you know, he'd like to get them better water. He says it's better now. I don't know if it's better now. It's better now. I mean, sometimes.
They put in all these, if you go out there and see all these towers they put in.
You get spoiled when you have our plant and our water treatment plant. You go out there and you park on the side of it, which I have multiple times, you sit there and you see them screens and that water flowing over those trees, you know? It's just not what I'm used to, you know?
They have tubes, these big, what are those things, Terry?
They're ion exchange units.
Right. All right, well, it's getting late. I agree. We'll put it on the back burner for a little bit and see where it goes.
Mr. Cobb, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Mr. Sundstrom, thank you as always for everything. Great job. And if you want to find another utility for us to buy, go right ahead. Do you want to add something?
Just real quick. The exercise that we did, we've got the data, we've got the numbers, we've got the facts. This is good stuff to have on the shelf because this issue, you're correct, it will be dealt with at some point.
Can I get a copy of those numbers? Because I like numbers.
You'd like to see them?
Yes, please.
Could you, I'm sure staff must have it. Just give it to Bob. Let Bob see it. He'll, then at the next meeting, he'll be like, what do you mean, we're not buying this? All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving right along, we're up to reports already. Look at that, 9:30. Mr. Cobb, you're up. It's short and sweet, right?
Yes, sir. I'd like to welcome our new assistant city manager, Mr. Patrick Kelly. This was his first council meeting, official council meeting, not counting the work session.
Patrick, I can assure you that this was an anomaly. I don't go usually past two hours.
And I'd also, I'd also like to welcome Mr. David Harrell, our new development review manager.
Great. Welcome.
And Ms. Notch Whitfield, our new planning manager.
Welcome, guys.
And it was their first meetings.
Now, we're happy to see you guys because when our other two left, we were a little nervous there. So, wow. And you got one heck of a nice lady to work for, so you're in good hands, that will tell you.
And I'd like to, Council, I need to know Florida League of Cities, I'm assuming that it's Mr. Britton, but I wanted to make sure our voting delegate for the League of Cities conference.
Oh, it's definitely Mr. Britton. He's not here.
All right. I will file that form. And speaking of Mr.
He likes that anyway.
Does he want to go there? That's pricey. I didn't realize it was like 500.
Oh, no. He eats this up.
Okay.
He loves voting.
If it brings value to the city.
Oh, yeah.
But if we can talk him out of it, that saves us 500 bucks.
It brings back some stuff.
Councilwoman, I'll honestly tell you that if I wasn't going to be out of town, I would go.
Okay.
Because Florida League of Cities, and I would encourage both new members, if you're able to go, to go.
To this one or to the, there's a more targeted training, I think it's in January or something?
No, when you go to this one, they have the, well, they have the targeted training.
This didn't look like it had the targeted stuff.
No, they've got the new member orientation. That's like two, two and a half hours. That's on usually Thursday, Thursday morning that occurs. Then just all the different symposiums that you can go to, all the different discussions that you can go to, which you quickly find out when you're there and you're starting to interact with all of your fellow elected officials from throughout the state of Florida is that it's the same problem, different zip code. And there's a lot of solutions that are out there. When you walk the floor and you talk to all the different vendors that are there, it's amazing what you find, you know? And actually, a couple of the vendors we have currently came from League of Cities that we've been at. So, as far as staying, you know, you can argue that you can drive back and forth, but...
It goes late. Some of that stuff looks.
Yeah, it goes late, then you start early and it's just easier just to stay there for the two nights, you know, three nights, whatever it may be.
I can give you an example. On Wednesday morning, I'll be attending a medical marijuana class. And then on Thursday, I'll be attending the ethics class, even though the mayor and I usually go together and...
Well, you can do it for me.
I have to do it for him this year.
I have to watch the videos this year. See, that's our thing. Every year we go, we go to the class, the ethics.
The entire morning.
And it's great when you go there because after an hour and a half, they tell you, well, we're supposed to keep you all here for three or four hours, but that's the class. You're good.
Just as long as you're ethical.
You have to take class. You do know that, right?
Well, I have to take it for other stuff too, ethics.
Right. But you do have to watch the videos because you have to check that box every year that you watch them. Actually, the one that you found is good too, the sheriff one.
What I wanted in the Florida League has one of the titties even better. You can't get to one so good.
Sorry, Frank.
I was fine, Mayor. I only have one other thing. I've received a letter, and I think you all got a copy of it, that Mr. Britton is being honored by the Florida League of Cities for his service. He...
Somebody explain to me how he has 20 years when I've sat up here longer. I'm just curious.
I think it includes his board of adjustment as well as his land planning agency experience.
Even on the LPA, but let's see, till 11, he kind of helped me eight, nine.
For quite a while, yes. So, I think, and you take into account the city council as well, and I think that's how he got the 20-year. But he has been, he has earned a John Land Years of Service Award for 20 years, and they will be officially recognizing him at a later city council meeting, so.
I'll have his name up on the lights on the screen.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I guess Keith was on LPA when I was on LPA. Yeah, I was on LPA in 99 and Keith was there, but he wasn't there because that's when he was in Boston. He was at MIT.
But he, what he would do, we worked it out with the chair, that he would try, he would, it worked out perfectly. He never missed two meetings in a row.
Right. I remember that.
That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Colbert, do you have anything for us?
I would just like to say I enjoy being with you all again. It's like old times when I get to come. Glad I don't have to come to every meeting, but...
They're usually not this long. You know that.
Mr. Grood is in England and I am here, and I've enjoyed being with you. And beyond that, I have nothing further to add to this.
It was great to see you as well. Councilmember Sladek, you're up.
All right. First off, shout out to Bobby Wyatt. Thank you for giving us a tour. Megan McCollum is in the back row here. She's the one who wrote the postcards to us at the beginning of the year, asking if we would consider a little bit more out-of-the-box thinking on the environmental front. So, we did a little tour of the LEED certified building there, walked around, talked about some good stuff. And I did not realize until she mentioned it that there is not necessarily recycling at all of the apartment complexes, which makes sense because they're not exactly residential. They're, you know, it's kind of a business, so they probably contract separately. Wanted to check and see if we could make recycling more easily available to those guys. If somebody's really motivated and wants to bring it to City Hall, is that a possibility at this time? I'm not sure who.
We have cans out here. Residents come and drop them off all the time.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to, maybe not in this budget cycle because we're pretty far along, in a future one, or this one if we can squeeze it, figure out how to work with or maybe require future multifamily residential to offer recycling? Is that, I guess that's a land development issue perhaps? Do we not currently require that?
I think one of the things, I'm not so sure that it would be a land development code issue. I think it would be more of a contractual issue with the service provider. And it may be a, Mr. Wyatt, I'm sure knows it better than I do, but it would be more of a code of ordinances issue because our waste hauling and recycling regulations are over in the code of ordinances. And so, I think it would be more in that arena than it would be in the land development code. But I think the biggest aspect would be our contract.
Okay. So, I would be interested in perhaps discussing or maybe even not even discussing later, just if there's consensus that we could change our code of ordinances to require multifamily to provide at least a minimal level of recycling. That might be.
I don't have an issue with that. I just seem to remember it being an issue when we renewed the Republic contract. I got to talk to Joseph.
But it's not for, they are contracting separately for dumpsters, so that's a one-on-one thing.
Yeah, we were trying to get them to pick up the recycling and the commercials. I forgot how that's all working. And now with the price of recycling down, nobody wants it.
Well, yeah, nobody wants it, but can we say that maybe they have to take just, I think, plastic and paper are the most profitable. They at least do that.
Talk to Joseph and that would be a good exercise. Talk to Joseph and come back and tell us what you find.
All right. Cool.
Nobody cares, right?
No, good. Joe, give me the whole city.
Awesome. All right, well, appreciate you bringing that up, Megan. So, we're kind of named twins, but she spells her name with an H. Also, wanted to give a shout out to Tracy Rodriguez and everybody who helped work on the storm water awareness campaign. It's kind of getting going. We've got these things that look like sewers. So, any kid who's ever watched Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles thinks that we have sewer entrances all around town, and these are underground rivers. So, there's a little bit of a movement now going from our end to educate people about what these underground rivers are and that you shouldn't put leaves down them and shouldn't put, you shouldn't dump your extra gas down there and think that somehow it's going to be cleaned. But thank you for all you guys' work on that. Looking forward to see how it turns out.
We used to have little signs on there that said not to dump stuff.
But you need like a turtle to tell you this or something memorable, seriously. Maybe Bob can draw us a chicken. We need some kind of, something that sticks in your brain. So, tell all your friends, if you're here, tell them those are not sewers. Those are underground rivers. Reminder, friendly reminder, golf cart ordinance. Is that coming up at the next meeting maybe?
I wouldn't say next meeting, but as soon as Mr. Greer gets in town, we'll be.
Okay. And another great idea from a citizen, fiber optic, bringing that to Oviedo. I was talking to Zach O'Hanlon, who at one point was helping out here at the city in the IT department, and he had done a little bit of research about what bringing fiber optic does for businesses and for residential uses. It adds about $5,000 of value per residential home for resale value. And then for businesses, it just makes fast speeds possible. At this time, the highest speed that a business can get is not fast enough to really do much of anything other than you're sending some email, you download what you absolutely need to, but you can't like host a server and do quick, cool stuff. The city can do quick, cool stuff because we're hooked into the county, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we got the county, but everybody else is kind of out of luck. So, planting the seed, let's figure out how we can get some fiber optic.
I'm going to tell you why.
Why? Because it costs something?
Yeah, that's what I do, but I'm just saying that's way too expensive. And I will tell you this, that Bright House, Spectrum, they can turn that up to what they call gigabit, ethernet, 1,000 megabits a second. They just don't do it because there's no competitors. That's why I said this broadband thing is great. Competitor comes out like AT&amp;T was supposed to come out here a year ago.
AT&amp;T is getting some.
They picked us as one of the cities to do their test of this gigabit ethernet, which is basically 1,000 megabits a second. That's what a gigabit is. So, we have 60, most in our houses 100, Charter, Spectrum, Bright House, all the same company. They can do it. They just have no incentive to because they have no competition. But if a city tries to do that, that is millions and millions of dollars. And here's the deal.
Yeah, we get somebody else to do it and show them how it benefits them.
Yeah, that's tough when a city does that because, I mean...
Hours get them.
Yeah, that's a tough, I'll explain that to you one day.
Well, if I could have your blessing to talk to other people about it, I'd appreciate.
Yeah, if somebody wants to.
Okay, because I'd like to know, what, what would it cost? I don't know.
You can get fiber in here, knock yourself out.
That's what you need, that's what we need to lobby. You need to send it real quickly.
I'm working on.
You need to send a letter to AT&amp;T, what happened to Oviedo being one of your test cities? They already have the wires in for their gigabit. Remember, we got the letter a few years ago, they were going to put that in Oviedo, that solves our problem. We have a sign on Lake Tron Drive.
Yeah, I keep, there is fiber optic behind my house. They exceeded their, they're outside of their.
I know.
I know, that's it.
All right, I have no report, it's late. Bob?
Well, I connected to AT&amp;T just recently, so.
Do you have gigabit?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, and all of the, you just got the regular one.
Yeah, but, but it was, it was a significant savings over, over what I was paying on Bright House.
All right, so do you report?
No. I haven't, I haven't, a while back, there was a, we got a presentation on the post office and the Storm Water Project over Franklin, and I hadn't really heard too much about it anymore. I didn't know if there was any updates on that.
I think we have something, there's something coming soon.
This is a preview to a meeting I'm having with Mr. Cobb tomorrow, but I finally got my memo back from the consultant, and I have a course of action recommendation to speak with Mr. Cobb, and at this point, mine is I can go either way on the project. I can do, it'll, it'll, the concept of the park, whole idea will work, post office or none, so.
Okay.
But I will hopefully follow.
So you'll bring that to us next meeting?
I don't know.
Somewhere in the future?
Yes, sir.
Near future?
Yes, sir.
But we got no money from the state now. That got backed from the budget. For rehabbing that. We're talking about for the, for rehabbing the post office, is that?
Oh, yes, that got vetoed.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Yes. The park.
Yes, yeah.
Got money for the park.
And Teresa, now that you've got all the, the planning managers, and how's the LDC